Good evening, everyone. I am now called to order the town hall meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 2, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, Rocko, please.
Mayor LaHuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiatus.
Here.
I would like to remind to everyone, in order to have a productive meeting, with professionalism based on the city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect, without personal attacks. I want to thank you for your cooperation. And we will now go into the public comments on the items that will now be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Peter Lackus, 514 Ashland Avenue. As we mentioned at the last meeting, y'all are now on a clock. Tick-tock, tick-tock, tick-tock. I'm not sure if you noticed, but yesterday there was a press conference from the city of Dunedin, the city that's way ahead of Tarpon Springs. And why is that? Because their government worked with the county to purchase the Gladys Douglas property. The city and the county raised 5.5 million, and the community raised 4.5 million to purchase 44 acres of sensitive land. Yet this board looks the other way. They only look in the direction of the developers and the money. That's all they see, the glitter of the gold and silver coins that are being tossed at them. So just remember this, come March 2022, some of you will no longer be there on the board because of your faulty decisions in ignoring the citizens of Tarpon Springs and the community. Your actions were detestable at the meeting when you said you didn't want to hear people speak out and wanted to delete the public from hearing the emails and people on Zoom that wanted to speak about that important issue. Seen it on the agenda, but Mr. Lacouris had said he wanted to bring onto the agenda for y'all to discuss limiting public comments through emails and Zoom in the future. Well, until you can have a packed house, you can't do that. And the citizens will remember the fact that you don't listen to them. But come March 22, or March of 2022, you'll hear their voice.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? Do we have any other comments? I hear none. Ms. Jacobs said we received any emails.
Not on items, not on the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs, do we have anybody online that wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on items not on this agenda, please raise your hand, and you will be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The only item that we have on the agenda tonight is the town hall discussion of homeless issue. And first of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone and to thank you for being here tonight to this town hall meeting and to provide us with your input. Tonight, we'll be addressing a very important sensitivity issue of homeless. And your input is very important to us. Collectively tonight, we must, we need to come up with a solution to this important issue in our city. Now, I would like to explain the process that we'll be using during this town hall meeting. First, the service providers will be invited to the podium to present their input and information that they have involving the services that they provide. The Board of Commissioners will have the opportunity to ask any questions that they want, they have. After that, the Police Department will share a report they prepare. Then we're going to go to the public comments from the audience. Then Mrs. Jacobs will be reading any correspondence that we have, any correspondence we received. Then we're going to see if we have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak on this item. After all that, the public portion of the meeting will be closed, and we're going to go to the Board of Commissioners' comments and discussion. Okay. Okay. And now, I would like to invite to the podium the service providers, and I would like to start with the Shepherd Center.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners Chief, and the City Manager. Thank you for having me here. At one of our consortium meetings, we had a speaker from St. Vincent de Paul who said, "The solution to end homelessness was housing." My suggestion to this board would be that we would find property, at least 15,000, 20,000 square feet, in the outskirts of Tarpon Springs, where we can provide transitional housing for 20 to 30 individuals, two beds per room, provide shelter, and and it would be just limited to Tarpon Springs, Palm Harbor, Dunedin, and Crystal Beach, which are the surrounding areas here that are closest. Transitional or supportive housing and homeless shelters can help stabilize with mental health issues, substance abuse, and for people who are experiencing homelessness. Example of this program, it's not only getting the property and putting in the amenities, you know, kitchen and bedrooms, and having an open space for shelter and an open space that we can conduct workshops. It would be just providing a program for everyone, for all the people that are involved, so that we can teach them, that we can educate them, prepare them to become self-sufficient, have a one-to-one caseworker working with them, provide mental counseling, mental health counseling, and partnering with agencies that offer alcoholism and substance abuse programs. Provide group workshops, financial, you know, giving them financial education, how to maintain a savings account, checking account, family budgeting, lifestyles, nutrition, career exploration. We would continue to assist with the social services support through access program, which is provided by the Department of Families, Children and Families file on the website. We would have specialized training and development, partnering with colleges such as St. Petersburg. We would have, we would train them to be on the job provided by the Shepherd Center. And most importantly, we would have a kitchen that would prepare all the meals, and we would be able to serve our homeless in that particular area. We are currently seeking a grant that would provide stipends for homeless individuals so that they can start working. By providing these stipends, they can be trained to work. Currently, we have hired the Shepherd Center. We have tested this, and we have hired five homeless individuals through the Help, through the Help Center. They have bathed, they have, they have, we provide them with the clothing, we provide them with washer and dryer, and we have a system in place where the manager, the supervisor of the Hope Center, she has done resumes and provided help for those needing jobs. She's also working and helping them get their stimulus check. Now, all of yous know that the Shepherd Center is also a mailing house for the for the homeless and underprivileged, whoever needs it. Because we don't just service the homeless. We service everyone in Tarpon Springs that needs help with food, furniture, housewares, whatever, social services, with Duke Energy, with bus passes, with birth certificates. We pay for all of that so that they can start getting whatever papers that they need. We also have resources. We try to put them in resources with the Housing Authority to try to get apartments, et cetera. We have a lot, we deal with a lot of the faith-based organizations. We deal with the hospitals. We all work together in partnership, you know, in order to help our community. And I will say to the chief that you have exceptional officers that are there when we call them, that if we have a problem with someone that is having a bad day, I'll say, you know, mentally, et cetera. And they come, and, 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 you know, we just, they, they take them off the property, and then they come back the next day, and they apologize to us. You know, "Miss Ada, can we come back? Can we, you know, get food?" Of course you can get food. No one at the Shepherd Center, whether they're underprivileged, whether they're homeless, is denied food. Like I told someone, "I don't care if they come from Pasco, I don't care if they come from New York," which I'm from New York, "and they need boxes of food, we provide all the food for everyone in need." We have been blessed, blessed by God, that we have gone in 2020 over 2 million pounds of food that we have provided to organizations in Pinellas County, St. Petersburg, in Clearwater, in Pasco. We provide boxes of food so that they can then give it to their organization or churches, which alleviates them coming to the Shepherd Center. Because right now, sometimes we have 200 to 300 people coming to get food. That is the necessity that we have here. Okay? And especially through this COVID. And I want you to all know, we were essential workers because even during the COVID, God just helped my staff that no one got sick, and we were able to provide our community entirely. Because we have people that were working, that are unemployed, coming in that they need food. And we were able to do this. We we have had such wonderful success stories that I all, I sent everyone a package. But I'm just gonna, two that may not be there because it didn't happen in 2020. We had a psychophrenic young lady who was for four years walking the streets and, 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 you know, didn't trust anyone, wouldn't eat because she thought that the food was poison. But little by little, we worked with her. We worked with her, we would talk to her, we got her involved. And the bottom line is that today, the young lady volunteers at our outreach program through help, through medication. We had another person that, you know, he was mentally disabled, but with medication. Today, he is one of our best workers at the Shepherd Center. It's, it's building relationships. If we build the relationship, that's what we're about. If we build those relationships, we can help people to, to, to become active in their community. They don't want to be sleeping in the street. They don't want to be, you know, without food or with anything. You know, they're human beings that have no other choice. And if we don't treat them with passion and consideration, they will react. We have had people come in that one, one per, one, one of our homeless, okay, the Hope Center, they went on Facebook, they found family. The brother came from St. Augustine, picked up his brother. And that's what we're trying to do, to see, to help them find their families. We have a mental health coordinator, and I'm going fast because I know that, you know, but we have a mental health coordinator that has successfully counseled at least 186 in 2020. And this is just the beginning. She is a licensed professional, and she's able to talk to them and find services and, and, and just, you know, put them on a path where there can be help. And yes, it takes time. This young lady that I was talking to, it took us four years. But today, she is a citizen of Tarpon Springs, and she is giving, she works part-time. And this is what I, what I feel that if we had the opportunity, if we had the space, if we had the rooms that we can take them off the street, that we can put them in shelters when they need it, especially, I, I look at this cold, cold weather that I'm freezing, but I have a home that I'm going to go to. But they're sleeping in the street. They're outside. What do we do about it? This is our community. How can we work together? Because if we work together, we will succeed. We have the best people here in Tarpon Springs, beginning with our mayor, with our chief, with our city manager. We can do this if we do it together. But we need your help. It took me two and a half years to raise the money for the Hope Center. But we have a Hope Center, and people told me, "That will never happen." But I came to this commission, and I gave a presentation, and they were there. And they we got it done. And that's how we work together. But we can, you know, our, our Hope Center, we don't have shelters. We don't have a shelter there. We don't have rooms for them to sleep in. But if we were to build collectively and get a property and get the right programs, because it's not just getting a shelter or having rooms or housing for people just to sleep in. No, you've got to have programs that are going to help them become successful citizens of this Tarpon Springs, of our city. We can't do it alone. We got to work together. And I tell you honestly, everyone that comes to the Shepherd Center, I tell them, "God is in this place." The things that we have been able to do with little money, but the things that we've done, okay, it's not from us, it's from God. And as you can see in my reports, it grows more and more and more. And eventually, we're going to need more space to be able to accommodate all the people that we work with. I just want to thank you for this opportunity for me to tell you, and I know that you may have questions, so...
If you please remain at the podium, we'd like to ask you a few questions, if you don't mind. I will start by thanking you for the services that you're providing to the people of Tarpon Springs. How many people do you serve every day? Can you tell us that?
We serve, well, we started with 50, and then the following year, it came up to 100. Last year, 2020, we were serving anywhere from 200 to 300 a day. Now, understand something. We're only open four days a week because the fifth day, from 10 to 1:30, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. On Wednesdays, we provide boxes of food to our homebound people, seniors that can't get out or disabled. And at 4 o'clock, we provide boxes of food in, in low in communities that cannot come to the Shepherd Center or that they're working or that they don't have transportation. So we bring out bags, at least 100 bags of food, to these communities.
Out of these 100 people that you're serving every day, how many of them are homeless?
And the people that we are serving food every day has not, has nothing to do with the people that we feed meals to, the community kitchens. The people that we serve food that are underprivileged, okay, they have a home. They don't have the money for food. They don't have the money for a lot of things. All right? The people that are homeless, we have about approximately 30 to 40 people that are homeless or living on couches or living in their cars. Those are the people, when you see the numbers in that report of the community meals, which is the community meals, we count how many meals were provided during that month or during that year. So maybe one person is really hungry or he wants to take some for, some food for the night, and we'll give him two bags. Now, we're serving in bags because of the COVID. We'll give two bags or three bags. Sometimes it's just one. Sometimes we'll just give them, and they're all hot meals. And sometimes we're able to provide hot meals and a sandwich because we know that by the, by 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, they'll be hungry again. So in that report, you will see that community kitchens is not how many people we have that we did 3,700 or 3,400,000 people, it's how many meals we provided.
Okay. Out of the 100 people that you serve in daily, how many of those people are residents in Tarpon Springs?
The majority of the people, and I would say about 80%.
80% of the people are from Tarpon?
Are from Tarpon. And they're, you know, and, and they're coming all, they're white, they're Greeks, they're, you know, blacks. But the majority of our people, okay, are the people that live in this community.
The other 20%, where do they come from?
They're coming from, and, and I will tell you, these were the numbers that we had probably in 2019. Because as of 2020, we would, we have people coming from St. Petersburg or Clearwater because they have no place where they can find food. We have people coming from all over. We had done a partnership with Feeding America last June, where we wanted, where they wanted us to provide boxes of food to different counties in Florida, where it was Citrus, Hillsboro, different counties. So we said, "Okay." It was, it was a drive-through. And what happened was that, and I was working with Officer Boone during that time, what happened was that people, cars were lined up from the bayou down Lime Street, then Banana, and turning on Boyer. And there were so many people and that, you know, trying to get food. And by the end of the month, I told Feeding America, "We could not do it because we were not in a community." You know, we have very little space, and our community consists of not only residents, but also businesses. And that, and they were affecting our business. So we stopped doing that. But I will tell you honestly, we have, 100 people was in 2019. We have over 200 to 300 a day, four times a week. And there are people from our community, and they may be coming, some people from Clearwater or from St. Peters, whoever, whoever is looking for food, that's, they drive down to the Shepherd Center. Because there is no food, Mr. Mayor. There is no food up. What they give them is a little box. This is what I've been told, little, a little bag. They can't afford to feed their families. But we, at the Shepherd Center, that we have been so blessed with food, we just give it. And we're only open from 10 to 1:30. And that is it. Four days a week. Again, the third, the Wednesday, we provide boxes for our homeless and our food drops.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have a question to comment?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. Thank you for being here tonight and talking about some of the items.
I've just got a few questions that I'd just like some clarity on. I'm just curious about the Shepherd Center. So who do you report to? I know you're the director. Do you report to like a board of directors?
We have a board of directors. I am accountable to the board of directors, yes.
Who is the board of directors for the Shepherd Center?
Well, we have our president, who can't be here tonight, John Consolino. We have the vice president, uh, the vice president Reverend Melody Kidd. We have our treasurer, Reverend Bob Kinney. We have our secretary, which is Sherri Piscatale. And we also have, uh, a communications and marketing person on our executive board. Her name is Juliet Adams. On the board, we have George Brown, we have Annie Dabs. These are people from churches. We have, um, Tom Henderson from the, uh, from the church, and just a few others, Beverly Graham, and Maria from St. Nicholas. We try to have one representative from the churches that we serve here in Tarpon Springs.
Okay, thank you. How many paid staff members are on the Shepherd Center's team?
Paid staff members, we have, um, staff between staff and contractual. We may have about twenty-six.
Okay. What's the operating budget of the Shepherd Center annually?
Well, our operating budget goes, um, over three million dollars. But that's because the Feeding America, the food that we are given, has a value of two dollars per pound. Our actual operating budget without the Feeding America food is somewhere about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
So you brought up the city of Palm Harbor, Safety Harbor, Ouzmar, and Tarpon Springs. Do you see much of an impact from Pasco County that comes into Tarpon Springs, the Shepherd Center at all?
We have people that are across the street from Holiday coming in. What we do is we provide food. Now, Pasco County had started coming in, in two thousand and twenty because the places I, uh, I, I don't, I'm not gonna say names, they were closed. They could not get food. We called ourselves to make sure that that was true, and we couldn't get anybody on the phone. But we did tell them, these are emergency foods. You have to be able to get your food at Pasco County. But again, Vice President, we don't deny food to anyone.
Yep, okay. I was just, I was curious if you're seeing influx from Pasco County, so it sounds like.
We have seen a lot of flex from everywhere, you know, and it's very.
So I see that the property that you guys are in right now was purchased in two thousand and sixteen for one point two million. Do you have any debt in that property?
We, we, the bank owns the property.
Okay, so there's a mortgage on it?
Yes, there is a mortgage.
And does the Shepherd Center pay any taxes on the property taxes at all?
We don't pay property taxes, but we do pay sales tax.
Okay, that's like in the, in the thrift store?
For the resale outlet store.
So you, you brought up a solution of acquiring some piece of land or some piece of property out in a different part of Tarpon Springs or in the area. Have you looked at selling your building to partner with somebody else for a larger building? Has that been discussed at all?
No, that has not been discussed at all.
I just wanna be clear, though. You brought up the idea of getting a larger building, maybe fifteen to twenty thousand square feet, right?
We were talking about a large, our building is thirty-three thousand square feet.
Okay.
But we were, what I was talking about was getting a building where we can have transitional housing and shelter out of the outskirts of, you know, the city of Tarpon.
But still keep the same.
Yes, but the services would be more at the other place. We still have to get our food there. I mean, we have different departments. It's not just the Hope Center, and it's not just the outreach. We have our pantry that we have to, uh, staff and, and, and get the food from. It's all in our community where we get the food from. We have the thrift store, we have the administrative. And we also need to have a continuous, we have a lot of people in that area that need assistance. Now, if we were to move everything out of, uh, where we are at, what happens to the people that are living there that can't travel to a, a, a faraway, a place?
Sure. How, how long have you been the director of the Shepherd Center?
Five and a half years.
Five and a half years. So were you there, let's see, twenty, twenty, so you were somewhere else. You were the director before you were at the current location, right?
I was what?
You were with the Shepherd Center before you were at the current location?
No. When I came to the Shepherd Center, that location had already been bought. That location had already been occupied.
Okay.
I came in, I think that they occupied it in January or, or February of two thousand and sixteen. I came in in June of two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so four and a half years with the Shepherd Center, or is that?
Twenty, wait, I'm sorry.
Five and a half years.
Twenty fifteen. Uh, we, we moved, apparently they moved in January and February of two thousand and fifteen. And I came in, um, in June of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, got it. And then, do you live in Tarpon Springs, or do you live in Palm Harbor?
I live right next to the Shepherd Center.
You do?
I live right, um, Bayou Village Drive.
Okay, got it. I think those are just, uh, let's see, do you feel there's an issue in Tarpon Springs at all with homelessness or vagrancy or chronic homelessness?
Well, of course, there is an issue. I mean, we're here today, and we've come to certain meetings. But we have been working to try to resolve that. The Hope Center just opened in August, which is one, a big thing that happened because through the Hope Center, we, we've been able to get the people to come in. Before, as you know, they were in different churches all over Tarpon. Now, they're coming to the Shepherd Center, the Hope Center. And we, what we've started to do is build relationships. That is how we are able to deal with our homeless, by building the relationships, letting them and, and having them trust them because we love them, we care about them, they trust us. And that's how we're able to help some of them. I mean.
I understand. You've mentioned that with the mayor too, so, but I appreciate that. Thank you for answering my questions tonight. I don't have any further ones.
Thank you. Commissioned Terpang, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for coming tonight, as well as everybody else in the audience. Obviously, this is a sensitive topic that we're discussing, and has been for, for quite a while. So obviously, the Shepherd Center is doing a lot of positive things for people, not only within the community, but in the surrounding community. So there's, there's no reason to try and take away from that. So I wanna congratulate you on that, but also hope that tonight and through the coming weeks and months, you'll, you'll work with us in trying to find a compromise that fits for the, the concerns with the other members of the community that are experiencing, you know, vandalism and just, uh, other issues that are associated with some of the homeless homelessness that we're trying to work towards. So the mayor asked some really good questions, as did the vice mayor. One of the things that I'd like to get a little bit more information about is a, a program, I think you, you named it as Feeding America. Is that what you said?
Do you know Feeding America?
No, no, I'm asking.
Oh, okay. Feeding America, it's a national organization that receives donated food and provides it nationwide to, um, all the communities or people in distress, uh, uh, communities, let me repeat. Feeding America, through Feeding America, we are able to, um, get food from about, I would say about fifteen, about fifteen supermarkets and grocery stores where they donate their food so that we can provide it to the, um, to the people that are in need.
And you, you mentioned that when the vice mayor asked you something regarding your, your funding and your budget. And I was hoping to get a little bit more information about that. You said, you mentioned something about two dollars a pound.
Yeah, that's their, uh, that's how they, um, that, well, that's what they do, uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing it here. But, you know, that's how they value the pound of food that everyone gets. So everyone, you know, and, and, and this is a term used more in grants. The food. So the value of the food is two dollars per pound.
So that's a reimbursement to the Shepherd Center?
No, we don't get reimbursed for that. We get the food to give out.
Right.
I wish we did.
Where does the two dollars come from? Help me understand.
Well, it's, it's, um, it, it's something that was, um, programmed into their program to say, if you are looking for a grant, if this is how much food, they just put a value on the food. It's two dollars per pound. And when I came in, that's what I knew, two dollars per pound.
So you mentioned something as it relates to your budget with the Feeding America. It's a three million dollar budget. Without the Feeding America, it's seven fifty.
Correct. That's the, that's the operating budget. Our operating budget that we get throughout the year from, um, uh, donors, it could be grants, whatever, that's our, but that we make from the thrift store. That's the budget that I am telling, that's what we make.
Sure.
The two, the, uh, two million dollars, which, you know, uh, two million pounds of food, which is then stated as two dollars per pound becomes four million dollars. Okay, that's something that it's taken out, it's put into the, um, uh, the, um, the income statement, and then it's just squashed in the expense statement. So that, you know, it just has to be in there so that if we, you know, uh, when we, um, apply for grants and we're getting food from Feeding America, it has to be in there, but it squashes it. Okay, when you look at a P and L, when you look at our balance sheet, it's on our balance sheet. That, that money is squashed from the income to the expense.
So last year, I think you said you, you gave out X amount of millions of pounds of food. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. How much was that, two million or something?
It was two mil, about two million, maybe a little bit more.
So the two, so when you give out food, in terms of the grants, you keep track of that? If you give out two million pounds of food, that's the equivalent of four million dollars worth of food. And that helps you become more eligible or put you in a position?
It doesn't help because when you read the, when, when, you know, we have to provide a P and L, which is a profit and loss report. And when you read that report, okay, it's, you can see that it states that this is what came in, because the two dollars would be of income, but then it's subtracted or squashed in the expenses. So whatever we make is what we've made. I mean, I would think that it helps us that we're giving out all this food.
It helps you for additional grant funding.
It may help us for funding. I don't see that anybody has looked at that, but yes, I can agree with that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I'm just saying. You know, I never thought of it that way, you know? We just, you know, prepare our reports, and that's what we put in. I never thought of it as, you know, um, when you, when you apply for a grant, you're applying for a specific grant. Now, unless you're applying for a food grant, for monies for, you know, food which becomes monies that you use, whether it's for the trucks that pick up the foods or deliver the foods, or the deliveries to the homebound, et cetera, when you apply for that money, how, you know, and you, and you do put, um, uh, how much money, how much food you're getting from Feeding America, and they all know that it's two-dollar value. Okay, yes, that may help to say, hey, they're feeding people. But if you're applying for a grant, that it's whether it's operating expense, whether it's, you know, when I applied for the mental health counselor to come in, that I applied from Allegheny, and to apply for a person to do our PHMIS, to keep track of the people, it's a tracking, uh, a data that, you know, uh, whoever has the PHMIS, you can find out, let's say that if, if so-and-so came in, and then he goes to the Salvation Army, and they look up his name, they can see that they, these services were provided, and they can be denied that service because they've already gotten it yesterday. So that's what the data for PHMIS. You need someone that is able to do that data to be able to deal with all the applications, et cetera, from our clients. And we were able to get a grant to, um, get that staffing. Now, I'm sure that they didn't look at the food, they, they're not concerned with the food. And we've had other grants. You know, we have grants to help us, you know, with, um, you know, when we pay outreach, when we pay, uh, 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 that we give so much money out, whether it's paying their Duke Energy bill, whether it's paying this, whether it's the people that work there. Those are the programs, that's what we apply for. The people that are doing the sorting, the people that, you know, are doing the driving, those are the type of grants that we apply for.
Understood. But it would be safe to say that the more food you give out, the more grant money you get?
I have never, ever saw it that way.
Okay.
There, there is no way that that would make any difference in any grant submission because that does not apply.
Understood. So if you were posed, and this is a separate topic, I was just trying to get an idea of how the, the grants work. You mentioned the two dollars a pound, so I figured I would inquire about it. So if someone posed the question or asked for a solution, hey, the residents in the business community are starting to have grave concerns with some of the homeless population in areas of town, the, this district, that district, whatever. As the director of the Shepherd Center, you're, you're thinking the solution is to find another facility in addition to the facility that you have?
What?
Hold on one second, please, let me finish my question. So you're, I think you said that the, your solution or, or what you would do is get another facility to, for housing specifically in addition to this facility?
What I was saying is to create, in creating another program, that we would have transitional housing and shelters for our homeless people. And that they would not, so that we would be able to take them there, and then we would provide programs to help them become self-reliant. That's, i- i- it's in addition to everything that we do. It's not that we're gonna move out. Now, um, we have had this conversation before, I know you weren't here, but we have tried working, um, to try to find some solutions. And, you know, it's always, we have meetings, et cetera. But everyone, the, this board, the community members, the organizations that we work with, everyone, the chief, he was, yeah, I think he was at one of those meetings. We all want to be able to have a resolution. There is no resolution. You can get a bus and put every homeless person in Tarpon Springs and take them to another state. And I will guarantee you that by the end of the week, there will be others coming in. And those who, those homeless people who were brought up, we have about thirty homeless people that were brought up in Tarpon Springs that may have left Tarpon Springs at one point, but they're in this situation. This is their home. This is home to them. We have other people that have come in. They feel safe here. Now, we have other people that come in, and they leave. They go on the trolley or. Now, we have other people that come in and they leave. They go on the trolley or they leave Tarpon Springs. We are trying to find a solution on how to help these homeless people, whether it's to find their, their families so that they can be taken care of, whether to put them in institutions like mental health or alcoholism that they, that they will start getting help. Or just, you know, they're just down in their luck. All they need is a place to live, and we help them find jobs. And now with the Shepherd Center, we're able to provide showers. We give them the, the proper clothes, and they're able to find jobs. That's what we want in our community. We want to be a part of finding the solution, I, I believe. That's what we, the Shepherd Center, Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center, this is our heart. Our heart, Commissioner, is for people that are in need. And we know that there are problems. And if, and if you would, you know, if, if the businesses that, that have concerns would only call me or say, hey, this person is doing this, that to see if they're coming to the Shepherd Center, that we can talk to them, that we can work with them. And we had asked for that before, and we never got it. Some of those people that we were talking about at the last time are today, they're either dead or they, they've died from cancer, they died from, got hit by a car, or they're no longer here, a lot of them. So, you know, we have in our community two, three that are disruptive. And when we have talked to some people, which are the homeless, but they're people, and when we have spoken to them and said, why are you doing this? We're getting these complaints. Why are you doing that? Why are you using the bathroom? Because they cursed at us, they treated us like we have no value, and this is the only way that we can get back. And of course, we start talking to them, and we can, we can build that relation to stop those things from happening. We can be able, I mean, yes, when they're, you know, very drunk or whatever, we will call the police department, which is not very often. But we will call, and they're there. And they, they, they get them out. But then they come the next day or the, the following week really want to work with us. I'm gonna tell you something, Chief. We had a problem with the gazebo. And, you know, Officer Jacob, who is very dear to me, he suggested that, you know, maybe it would be wiser to get the gazebo out of there because you have a lot of people. Well, I went to the board, whatever. I think you know what happened. My intent is to have that gazebo moved. But in the meantime, I will tell you that we have plastered the gazebo with no, no trespassing, no this, no that. And I am going to tell you honestly that it has made a 95% impact that they're not going into the gazebo. We also have a bus stop where people are waiting for buses. And if they need to get out of the rain, if they need to get out of the sun, they, they, they try to cover themselves under the gazebo. It's working. But we, our intent is to move the gazebo to our courtyard. Yeah, at the Hope Center Courtyard.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate the work that the Shepherd Center does. I appreciate all the work that you do. I currently serve on the Homeless Leadership Alliance of Pinellas, which is a board of up to 27 people that tries to solve homelessness in Pinellas County. It's made up of religious leaders, elected officials, nonprofit leaders, business owners, police. So this is an issue that's near and dear to me. I, I just wanted to kind of gauge your experience based on how, you know, the entire county overall dealt with COVID-19. And a pretty common theme that we saw was, you know, due to social distancing guidelines, the sheltered numbers were almost halved overnight. And so that led to a lot more homeless individuals being out on the street, needing to get help. And same thing with street outreach. A lot of street outreach programs, some of them still aren't back into existence because of social distancing or honestly, just the risks that come with it right now. Did you guys experience anything with that? And would you say your numbers increased due to COVID?
Well, what happens is that with the COVID and the regulations, we, we no longer gather to eat together. What we do is that we provide the bags. Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Fri, and Friday, Saturday. We just give them bags. On Sundays, because we have a lot of volunteers that cook for us, that are churchgoers, we provide a bag of food, and it could be two, from one to two. And, and we have continued to have on Thursdays from 10:30, I think it is, to 11:30, we have continued to serve at St. Timothy's, where the pastor, Pastor Kurt, will sing worship songs, will give sermons, talk to the people, and just help them with the spiritual. And we decided to do it that way because we wanted one day where we can clean our facilities. And Pastor Kurt was so, you know, this is his mission. This is his passion. You know, it's something that we were not gonna take it away from him, that this is something that he does. And gave us the opportunity to be able to clean our stoves or clean, clean the, the refrigerators and clean our office space.
And, and I know, just a lot of people are trying to make sense of the increase in numbers this past year. So, I mean, would you say that COVID increased the overall amount of people that you're serving daily?
Yes. Now, we're not talking, now, you're talking the homeless population and the underprivileged. We serve those two populations.
Both.
And yes, under the, the, the underprivileged, our numbers went sky high because people are just looking for food. We had somebody, you know, who, who, who told us, okay, you know, we, I have a good job. You know, I made $50,000. Is that gonna be, is that gonna prevent me from getting food? And we said, no. We have people, we have had nurses and people needing food that they don't have enough coming to the Shepherd Center to get that one or two boxes of food for their families. And our homeless, our homeless have remained the same. I feel that some of them have decreased because they have just gone elsewhere. We used to have these 65 people, 70 people, you know, getting hot meals. We don't get that anymore. And understand something, Commissioner. It's not only the homeless. It's people that live in couches, live in cars, that do not have access to food, and that they come to get that hot meal. We have families that would come with their children to get meals. So the homeless is, you know, i, i, it's a vast variety of people who have no homes. That's what homeless is. They don't have a home to sleep in, but they live in their cars. And now through the Hope Center, what we want to do is be able that they will feel dignity by taking that shower. Oh, we don't have clothes. We have clothes. And that, for some of these people, it's very important to them. My program supervisor, you know, had a homeless person that, he was a little, and he told her, he's, he's in a hospital. He is in an alcoholism hospital. I mean, does anybody know Bear? He's in an alcoholism hospital. And Jeannie Bone is the program supervisor. And he told her, I'm doing this because of what you and the Shepherd Center have done for me. And I really feel, and without your care and without your love, I would not be in this place. She goes out of her way on weekends, whenever, to take them to the hospital to do whatever needs to be done because that's who we are. That's who we are. And that is the type of staff that I have working with us. People that are passionate about what we do and about this population. Because, believe you me, I know very well that we have a lot of problems. But again, we can work together, Commissioner Tara Penny. We can work together to be able to, you know, we will do whatever we need to do to work together with you and anybody else that, to be able to face these concerns that we have in our community.
Okay, thank you.
Ask me, you ask me, but we will work with you, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner DeCortis?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Good evening, Ms. Delgeis. We've had you standing there for about an hour. Would you like to sit on the stool?
No, that's fine. Thank you so much.
I spent a couple of hours with Ms. Delgeis earlier today and actually was at the Shepherd Center yesterday as well. One thing I've learned is that the Shepherd Center is a very complicated business. It's very broad, comprehensive. And, and I made it clear to Ms. Delgeis, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna be interested in solving the country's problems with the homeless. My interest as a Commissioner is to address the problems that people have brought to us. So that was my focus of the meeting today. And Ms. Delgeis shared her vision and her plan with this relocating the services elsewhere. And I'd like to kind of, we went through that a lot more thoroughly than you were able to do tonight. And I want to bring out some of the high points by asking you some questions. The, the 15,000 square feet that you mentioned was the building. Is that correct that you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so we would need three or four acres that would go along with that from the standpoint of, of making that building fit and providing parking and so forth. The, the, the housing, the temporary housing would be in what form of the interior?
So what I'm looking at as a plan, it would be that we would have at least, let's say, 10 to 15 rooms, two beds each, which would be a transitional housing for people in the program, working our program. And then we would have a space for the people needing shelter during these, either cold weather or just being picked up from the community if they're sleeping on a bench, and I'll use that.
Right.
Sleeping on a bench that, you know, the officer will say, no, you're going with me, and that they will take them there. This program is transitional housing and shelter. That we would want to have a kitchen to be able to prepare all the food there so that they can have breakfast, or they can have lunch, that they can have meals. And that the people that we are serving today in our community meals program, that they can have a place to go because the more that they gather together, the more building of relationship we will have. Now, that is not the Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center. That would be Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center, Part Two, Housing and Sheltering. That has nothing to do with the programs when it comes to the food or anything that we do here at 304 South Pinellas.
Right. I, what, what, so the idea, if there is a, an issue with one of the homeless in town that would be on a bench or something, it would be a locate, a place that the police could pick up the gentleman if that's within our policy, policing policy, to take him to the Shepherd Center. And then, I'm sorry, the, the relocation outside, at the outskirts of the city and place him there until whatever the issue is gets resolved. And I understand the transitional housing. The idea was with that, that the, and I think it's the idea, if I'm not mistaken, was that the people that we have in town, and, and I know you, when you speak of things, it's hard for you to, when you speak of things, you, you speak of things comprehensively, the way we're talking about, the 200, the 300. And the 80% of the people from, of, from Tarpon are part of that 200. My interest at this point, because I, I don't want to get into the business of the, the Shepherd Center. I don't pretend to understand it. But the 40 or so people that you feed daily are the ones that, that come in, get fed, and then leave again. They go across the street to, behind the Tarpon Mini Mart elsewhere that creates some of the nuisance activities that, that are of importance to the business community. Those would be the ones that would be housed at this, at this location on the outskirts of town. Is that correct?
That is correct. Anyone homeless that needs a place would be there now. We, the 40 people that we feed through the, the community meals, they're not 40 homeless people.
No, no, I, I know that. I know that. I'm just talking about the 40.
We have those two or three that are harmful, but...
Right. In, in the, your number's 40, the police department's 30 to 40 of the same group that we're talking about. It's just the subgroup that creates the issues, the nuisance problems in Tarpon that we receive photographs of or in what the businesses call us about and send us emails. So the idea would be that transitional housing would be for that. The type of building, you and I discussed something along the line of a manufactured building to provide that flexibility within that to create your housing, transitional housing, your offices, your kitchen, the same sort of thing. You, we also talked about a bus stop, whether there was any requirement that you would need to be near a bus stop. And it, and this, earlier today, you told me that that was not high on your priority.
Correct.
So, and then also the area would be somewhere, somewhat, a little more remote from, from residential housing and that sort of thing. For example, the North Anclode area would be a, a, a location, not necessarily on alternate 19 either. So I'm just trying to provide some additional information that the Commission may be interested in. I think the idea of whatever you do is not to disrupt the operations and the services that you provide at the, at the Shepherd Center. For example, the 200 or so, which is people that are somewhat mobile, could still come in and pick up their food baskets is, is what I would call them, their boxes and that sort of thing. And I think that's what you were talking about. So the food would still continue coming into the Shepherd Center on Boyer and Pinellas. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and your thrift shop would still stay there and everything. So the whole idea, again, of this plan for relocating the, what I would call your, your homeless services, your, your, this plan would be for the homeless that we see walking the streets with, you know, shopping carts and things of that nature. Just for clarification, what percentage of those are actually, do you believe are actually from Tarpon Springs?
I believe that out of the 40 or 50 that may come in, most of them, 80% or so, are from Tarpon. I believe that we have the majority that live in Tarpon that are from Tarpon. We have that small percentage that come from Clearwater or Palm Harbor that they don't have, you know, anywhere to, to go eat. But most of them, and right now, we, we are gathering data. This year, this is our, the next step that we're doing. We are gathering data as to where they were from, et cetera. But when I have spoken to them, they have given me the stories of how they grew up here in Tarpon, what they did, who they knew, et cetera. And then what they applied became, you know, they moved out of Tarpon, they got met, or whatever it was.
And then they're back.
And then when they, when they were, they didn't have anything, or they lost their biz, or they lost their home, they came back. they came back home.
Okay. And, and I know your objective is not necessarily to continue feeding the 40. You're always trying to help them, uh, place themselves somewhere in society so they're not dependent on the Shepherd Center. I know you and I discussed that as well. So I, I, um, I think that's all the questions I have. I, I know that, um, it's very important tonight that we come out of this town hall meeting with some, I would hope, plan, or at least some concept in mind that we could give the city manager some direction to pursue further. So I, I very much appreciate you being here and, um, uh, expressing that and giving us the thoughts of what you have for a pa, uh, a, a plan. I've got more to say about this, but I'm going to wait till our, our discussion. Thank you.
Mrs. A, I have one more question to ask you. How many, uh, places do we have in Tarpon Springs that they're providing meals every day?
No place. Other than St. Timothy, that is on Thursdays, we are the only ones that provide meals.
Yeah, the churches do not provide meals anymore?
No, we moved everything to Tarpon Springs so that the homeless would not be walking to the churches through the community, through, uh, Tarpon Road, so that they would not, so that they would not affect the businesses. And we moved everything to Tarpon Springs that they come in, uh, um, on Lime Street.
Okay.
So that they, it doesn't affect, uh, our neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for, uh, being here tonight with us.
Thank you for having me here, and God bless you all. And, you know, thank you for all you're doing for our community. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other providers here with us tonight? That they want to share their experience, the information they might have?
I'm not an official provider. I'm just a volunteer at a different service.
No, this is only for providers, right, for right now, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have, uh, public comments after that. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. Name is Chris Palaisis. I coordinate outreach and the kitchen from St. Nicholas. I live in Tarpon since 40 years. And, uh, so the last four years, I volunteered into everything. So I know what, how each situation looks. I make some notes here, but I went through everything with the nice report that he gave to all of you. And, uh, I'm going to pick up here and there a few things for a short time. First, I want to remind all of you, I know all of you being in big cities like Tamba, San Pete, Fort Lauderdale, Miami. The situation with the homeless in these places is unbelievable because there's no control. And some, Tarpon Springs is heaven for all of us, for, for the homeless and for us too. The reason of the homeless, all of you know, there's domestic violence, drugs, alcohol, Vietnam to the veterans. And the veterans, after they went, uh, wounded in the war, when the most of them, the high protected people that didn't go there, we don't treat them that well. And I'm going to give you a few examples to, to show a parallel. And one of them is till the pandemic, we stopped last March. The St. Nicholas used to do the kitchen, and I used to open at 3:00. And when I opened at 3:00, they used to come, all of these men, women, they have a cup of coffee, some eggs, donuts, they have socializing. So you don't see anybody around the laboratory or these places. And, uh, and around 10 o'clock, you used to come, the policeman with the young lady, try to find him a place for, if somebody needs a place, because I was asking sometime, down the Clearwater, Clearwater have a shelter. And, uh, everything was very nice. And I want to thank the police department for the good work. And all the policemen, they were two, three, they change, all of them. And here, the police department is very nice with the homeless. And the homeless people, it's not a shame to be homeless because all these people that went there because the reason was other, without control by them because they're out of money. And, uh, they went over there. Now, for us to treat homeless is not to use, some people, they're using the word clean them up or stuff like that. It's hard to treat them. And I look at the police, I read the paper the other day. They said about the benches, 50 incidents, the police department said. But if you look at the report, the incidents, they were, uh, lotterying, talking back. We have on the records, I think, eight to nine or 10, the most people were alcoholics. But the police can control them very well. But the most of us, people here in Tarpon, not all of us over here, but some of us, they're talking to them, they're looking back at them, they're respectful. And they still put the tans at ankle. When someone doesn't look at them, call them names, stuff like that, they respond. So, uh, what do we need to do? Find a solution. The best solution is, right now, for the last few years, I see, I was come to the Shepherd Center. We move very rapidly, moving up, feeding all these people, as you mentioned. And I see it every day, the people coming up there, and the food they're giving to some churches, organizations, everywhere. What do the, what the city needs to do? That's my suggestion to you. That's why I come here. The city needs to support the Shepherd Center, even with grants, even with money. That's the first step in a thousand mile trip. And can, can, with the health department, to get more mental health specialists. Or if there's jobs, the city manager, part-time jobs or stuff like that, call Ada. If you have somebody, some of these communities have a job. And, uh, the other thing is, because the shelter is going to be, do a super job because I think it's around 25, 30 people here for us who need, needs that. And, uh, since we are here today, we can make a decision to create some committee that include in one, one of the commissioners, Ada, uh, one of the priests, pastors of the churches. If you see, not too big, around eight, nine, 10 people. And they're going to study the situation, everything, they come back, report to you. And then you make a, a decision that based on facts. But the most of all of us is treat the people who respect. That's all they need. They are humans, like all of us. And some of them, the veterans, and I have to, I wonder before we try to build a home center, how these people, uh, get washed. And I see people, they're going all the way from Tarpon here, walk to go, if they don't have a bike, walk to go down the beach to get a shower, or go to some restrooms, or the laboratory to wash their face. And now this building with the hub center, they are cleaner, they are more looking better. And you, every time you see them, they greet you nice, difference of day and night. So that's all of us here. Because I know all of you care as much as all of us do, the same, all of you, I know all of you, to find a solution. But the most of all, we need to give it respect for them. Thank you.
One second, Mr. Palaisis. I want to thank you for your input. Can you tell me if St. Nicholas is in, in service to the homeless currently?
We cook every Monday.
You still cook every Monday?
Yeah, we cook every Monday. We pitch the, uh, the meal at St. Nicholas Kitchen, and we take it down there to the hub center. Because to the pandemic, we're not allowed to get inside. We serve it over there. The fill-up of, of the church, uh, paying bills, electric bills, and whoever needs any help. And, uh, during the holidays, we try to help them with gift cards and everything. So we're working, but the main, the main, uh, pirinas is the Greek word, the main base, the foundation, the common is the Shepherd Center. So we need all of us to help. And St. Nicholas many times helped, if he gives a positive helps, he helps. But all of us need to be together.
Thank you. Do we have any commission comments, Vice Mayor? Do you have any comments? Commissioner Tara Penny, any comments?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for your input.
Commissioner DeCortis.
Thank you, Mr. Palaisis.
Welcome.
I, I have a question. If, if, uh, Ms. Delgeis' plan was put into action and this facility was located on the outskirts of town, would, um, I know you'd have to get the, uh, Church Council's approval on this, but would your team that feeds on Monday, and I was there yesterday as well, would they be willing to, uh, go out to this other location and feed the homeless as they do today?
There's no problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was good. Thank you very much.
I just, I just to make a little suggestion here. Commissioner Donovan is on the commission down Pinellas County Commission. So I think for that shelter we're talking about, they built one in Clearwater. And sometimes for us here, uh, the lady who was with the police officer with the, with the, with the homeless ministry, she used to come with the officer, and she used to ask them, where do you live and all that, to save some time to get them a bed out there. So Commissioner Donovan knows about it. He talked to them at the meeting there.
One, one last question, Mayor. Um, just to make sure everybody understood that the, uh, the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox, uh, cathedrals does not feed at Father Trifon Hall anymore. They, the team, the volunteers from the church actually go to the Shepherd Center on Boyer and South Pinellas and, and dispense the food at that location.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The volunteers, they cook, and at 10:30, come a van, we have to deliver it over there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Palaisis. Do we have any other providers here tonight? Yes, sir?
Sir, my name is Ron Hadad. This is a form of, of providing for the homeless. I coordinate what we call the Cold Night Shelter here in Tarpon Springs. This is something that's coordinated through Pinellas County. Uh, when the temperatures are forecasted to dip below 40 degrees, I get an email from the county telling me to open up the Cold Night Shelter here in Tarpon Springs. We are currently using the Boys and Girls Club on Lime Street, just a block away from the Shepherd Center. We, we have been opened three times so far this year. Uh, we have averaged between 30 and 35 homeless men and women. The Salvation Army comes around 7:00 in the evening, and they provide a hot meal. One of our volunteers comes around 6:00 in the morning and provides a hot breakfast. I have two teams of maybe 20 people each. One team will coordinate the Cold Night Shelter on a given night, uh, starting at around 6:00 in the evening. We bring out all of the mats that are currently in our storage unit, right on the Boys and Girls Club property. Uh, we bring in all of the, now the masks, and the, uh, the County Board of Health has given us a set of guidelines. We have to take temperatures, we have to ask questions and so forth. So, um, we have very little trouble with the homeless. I think in the five or six years that I have coordinated it, maybe one time, I had to call the police and ask them for some help. The homeless are very grateful for the service. We provide a warm place for them to sleep at night and, uh, a, a meal at night and a meal in the morning. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that this is something else that's being done here in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
That's a good service. Mr. Hadad, can you hold on a second, please?
Sure.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner DeCortis.
Hi, Mr. Hadad. If, I'm going to, I'm going to stay focused tonight on Ms. Delgeis' plan. If she succeeds in providing transitional housing for these 30 or 35, which I assume would be the same people that you're discussing right now.
Yes.
Would your team be willing to continue providing that sort of support on cold evenings, although they will be in transitional housing? But there may be some other need, like with the Salvation Army, especially on cold evenings in a manufactured building that is probably going to be heated anyway. But I just want to make sure that, I think, as Ms. Delgeis said, and I think what, uh, from my standpoint in the commission, it only makes sense that everybody has to cooperate in this manner, or else any kind of plan isn't going to work. So I'd like to get some, uh, thought on your part of whether this would be acceptable to participate in that way as well.
Absolutely. We would be delighted to help in any way we can. And I might also mention, uh, I have recently coordinated a, a group of about seven civic groups here in Tarpon Springs. Rotary, the Odd Fellows, the Elks, the Women's Club, Ahepa, Daughters of Penelope, and the American Legion. We have met several times, and we are also very concerned about the, um, homeless problem in Tarpon Springs. And we, as a group, want to support the Shepherd Center. As their plan unfolds, we want to work with the police and the city commissioners. So, uh, they have specifically said, Ron, be sure to say, we are willing and happy to help in any way we can.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir then. Do we have any other, uh, do we have any other providers who would like to speak? I hear none. Now, we'd like to invite the police department to share with us the report they prepare.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, citizens. Thank you all for coming tonight. Just want to start off by saying, being homeless is not a crime. We cannot arrest our way out of this issue, nor should we try. In 2018, Chief Cochin did a PowerPoint presentation in front of the Board of Commissioners. That's in your backup, uh, support now and, and back for the citizens. That's just as true today as when it came out. All of those PowerPoint presentations, you can go through those, and they're all still relevant today. A couple of updates. We no longer have one homeless outreach officer. We now have two. We asked them to come here tonight. Officer Palmer and Officer Halaby are here. And Officer Boone also, as our crime prevention officer, also steps up quite a bit uh, in, in building relationships, uh, with everybody in town. And they've been a great asset to us and appreciate their hard work. One thing I would have added to the PowerPoint presentation that the chief had, and I would probably add that tonight, would be one, one title. Love your neighbor. We should all embrace this philosophy. We all have a duty to help those in need. COVID has shown us all that any one of us can fall on tough times and are all vulnerable and may need some help one day. But as we love our children, we also hold them accountable for their actions. The large majority of those persons serviced by food banks are law-abiding people with respect for themselves and others. Why we are here tonight is to talk about those 5% that caused the issues. The chronic anti-normative, those that have offered ser, we've offered services to many times but refuse. They also refuse to go by the standards set by society. We arrest them for criminal acts, and they are taken to the county jail, where they are fed and provided medical attention. And then, once released, they return on a bus back to Tarpon, where they know they will be fed. We have plenty of compassion in Tarpon Springs, and many that want to help the homeless, but few that want to hold them accountable for their actions. This is when nearby businesses are affected. Individuals lying in front of business doors, leaving debris on the sidewalk, relieving themselves on the business doorsteps. We will arrest for criminal behavior. We can look at developing city ordinances to address behavior. But without accountability with those providing free services, they will continue the cycle all over upon returning to the city and utilizing the services available. Remember, we said, love your neighbor. And with those in need, that is very true. But it is equally true that the business next door to you is also your neighbor. The issue of homelessness is not confined to the city of Tarpon Springs, nor is it just a police issue. But rather, working with our community partners on the concerns and issues at hand is the only way which we can achieve our desired result. I was very happy to hear tonight that the, uh, Shepherd Center wanted to, uh, build that partnership and work with us on identifying those individuals because it is only rather a small handful that affect the daily life of everybody in the community. We get the calls, we get the photographs sent to the commission. It comes to us. Our officers go out there and deal with the problem and have to address this. And I think if, in partnership with the Shepherd Center, if they start holding them accountable, maybe we can curtail their... they start holding them accountable, maybe we can curtail their behavior a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments.
Mayor, I have a que-
Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I think Chief Young, thank you for your presentation. I had sent an email to the commission. The, the two approaches that I had was one, the feeding the homeless and the things that you described is not an issue with me. It's, it's non-negotiable from that perspective. I think we're all sympathetic. However, where people are fed, especially the ones that create the nuisances, is an issue with me. And then, so if we could find a spot away from this main part of town to where those are, where those services are provided, feeding and so forth, and there isn't this desire to come back down into the main part of town that would be creating the nuisances as, as the police department deals commendably well with the ordinances that we have, that's one solution I propose. The other solution was strengthening the ordinances that we have and maybe creating new ordinances from, from, from the police chief's perspective. And I'm putting you on the spot. Which would be your preferred approach?
Well, my preferred approach would be to have no homeless issue at all and everybody be living happy. But that's not a reality. And the reality is, the Shepherd Center, with all the great work that they do, and if they do have that facility built, not everybody's going to use it.
Right.
There's still going to be that small population, that 5%, that we continue to offer all the time help, that are not going to want to be inside a facility because they just refuse to be held to standards or rules. They're in, they do live in the woods by choice, a lot of them. And that's, that's a small, very small population that we're talking about. But they are the ones that, you know, any community, when you look at crime, you have 5% committing 95% of the crime, whatever community that is. And the homeless are no different. You have 5% of that population that are causing 95% of the headaches throughout our city. The same pictures, the same people, I could walk into each business downtown at the sponge docks and they could probably tell me the name of the individual that sits out there and defecates, or sits out there and curses at somebody, and that we're going to have to deal with, whether there's a new facility on the other side of town or not. Now, do we want to move something out of the site and, and get it off the, the main thoroughfare and up there? I think that's a great project and to be commended. And I didn't hear, though, from the Shepherd Center that they were gonna, I thought, I thought they said they were still keeping the Shepherd Center down there. You'll still have the thrift store. Would you still be doing food services? I thought you said that that would continue there for those in that general area. So will it have an impact? I don't know. That would be, to be foreseen.
Let me take it to the next step. How would you explore that, whether it would be that much value or not, to do something to, to address some of the issues that we've got in town now, the way you're describing?
Well, I do think one option was brought up is to get other stakeholders involved. Let's hear from the community members, hear from the church officials, anybody in society. If we can do a small group and put them together, that'd be great.
You could do that in a group outside the public meetings such as this to get these things.
Absolutely. We would want that input. Again, like I said, the police department, we are not going to solve homelessness. I think I heard you say that earlier today. We're not going to be able to solve-
Right.
This issue is throughout the world, not a, a United States problem, not a Florida problem, not a Tarpon Springs problem. It's a societal problem.
Right.
And I think, together, as a community, we can address our hotspot issues and focus on those, and maybe we could have a positive effect.
Have you, I, I know the programs that you have, and, and I've met on site with Chief Cochin and Officer Boone with some of the issues on Tarpon Avenue between Tarpon and Orange. And I know that the, the trespassing warrants, the others of working with the property owners to fence things off to, to, to kind of eliminate cubbyholes where people might camp out and things. Beyond what you're doing now, do you see any more enhancements that you can obtain through, let's say, changes of ordinances? Have you thought about that? Or, or do you, or do you think we're pretty much at our limit? I guess I'm trying to get a feel for how much latitude we have in our, realistically in our ordinances to push that envelope.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can look at other ordinances, like City of Clearwater, St. Petersburg have ordinances that do look at some issues that address issues of lying and sleeping on, on the sidewalk and blocking paths during daylight hours and things of that nature. So those are things that probably would work with the city attorney's office or other staff members on development if we need to. Could they have a positive effect? Are they constitutionally sound? Those are things and issues that I would run through the, through the city attorney's office.
I'm not trying to, I know those things are possible, but that's not what I'm trying to do, is create work. I'm trying to get a preference from our police department. You're the experts in the city government-
Yes.
-on dealing with the homeless and the issues that we've had downtown and elsewhere. And I'm just trying to get a sense of where you, as the police department, would focus your efforts and where you would think that you would get the most in the resources and the effort that we would put into it. How much would we get out of that to eliminate, eliminate some of the problems we have right now in the downtown? That's what I'm trying to get at. I, I don't want to just shotgun this approach and try everything. I think we've always talked about doing that and, and nothing really works. I think we need to have a focused plan. And I think getting the stakeholders involved and things of that nature, as you're describing, is a very smart way to do it and bring everybody along together. Because if you leave one or two out, I don't think this plan was going to work. For example, the one good aspect of, of what I see right now is the Shepherd Center has consolidated services at the one location. The, the several churches that were involved are no longer involved. They are involved, but they're all involved at the Shepherd Center. So I think that's a good thing. So where do we go from there? And so we have our police department that, again, you're, you do a terrific job, given what we've got as far as ordinances go. And I'm just trying to get a sense of where you would think that the best approach would be as far as dealing, that's why we're here tonight, is to deal with these problems. And I agree with everything you say, but, but we need to answer the public. What, what would you?
I think, you know, taking the small step would be having the accountability. If we can get them to be held accountable for their actions downtown, if you, you know, we, we, if we have to arrest somebody for criminal behavior, but yet they come back the next day and they still are able to get services. Now, I understand, everybody deserves a free meal, you know, but it, there's, there's also that duty on that individual to act within the, the standards and the guidelines that are set forth in society, and they can be provided that free meal. If their behavior is outside of that norm, and yes, they get arrested, they're taken out, down to county jail, but it's just the vicious cycle that just keeps going on and on, and there's no change in the downtown corridor with that behavior, because we would move them, they come right back, they know they're going to be fed. And that's all they're looking for is the free food, and then they want to be, do what they want to do. They'll be begging for a dollar, they'll get a dollar, they might go, go buy a drink, and then sit back down on a bench and be there all day.
Do you think that some of the homeless do things out of spite, as was mentioned tonight?
I wouldn't doubt it.
You think, you doubt it, or?
No, I said I would not doubt that.
You doubt it? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know it's on a case by case.
Right. And again, I, I want to emphasize this. We are only talking about a fractional
Right, I understand. I understand. But that's, that's where the attention.
And that's exactly why we're here tonight, because of the actions of a very few people.
And as a matter of fact, in looking at your report, this one fellow, I won't mention his name, looked like he was cited 17 times or something.
That's nor-
That's what I was asking for, and I appreciate that data, to see if out of these 40 people or so, how many of them are repeat offenders, and they're certainly there.
And we can put our top five list together and start off with that and work with you, and work our way backwards on trying to curtail their behavior and identify that. And I know that, you know, starting with our first homeless outreach officer, Officer Yorgoulis, then Officer Hollingsworth, and now Officer Palmer and Halaby, we work well with the Shepherd Center, but I would just like to see the more of the accountability on these individuals that don't behave in public. That, that's all we're asking, is for that extra little step to help every, that's why all these people are here, because their businesses are affected, their home lives are affected because of a few. Not because the line of people that are waiting for food, because that can be any one of us. And we all know that. Everything that you do at the Shepherd Center to help that 95% of the people. But now, just hold the 5% a little more accountable, give us a hand, because we can't do that alone. And that's all we're asking for.
Chief Young, I, I see Officer Boone in the background. We received photos today of the bus stop at the corner of Court and Pinellas. And also, I was there yesterday and today and looked at the gazebo and also the bus stop at the corner of Lime Street and South Pinellas. There's a distinct difference between the two locations.
I will say this. Officer Boone and I were talking about this the other day. The Shepherd Center does a great job.
Right.
They go around cleaning up everything around their facility there. So thank you for that, because some of these people will leave their trash wherever they are at, but the facility gets people out there and they do clean up. So I don't know, maybe we can expand outwards and do a cleaning project or something like that. You know, but this is stuff that we can brainstorm with that group and put together. And those people that are getting free food might say, hey, I'm, I'm willing to help. Thank you. And we can get the corridor cleaned up a little bit more from those that don't want to throw it in the trash.
That's the distinction I wanted you to bring out. I know in speaking to Ms. Del Guy's today, they actually speak to the homeless that utilize that bus stop-
Yes.
-and have basically told them, unless you police yourself, you know, we're going to have a, we're going to have a problem with, with, you know-
And that's the type of stuff that we want to see and work in partnership with them.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Terrapin.
I just had a, a quick question based on the discussion y'all were just having, just to build on a little bit. Regarding the select few that are causing trouble, right, and the, some cooperation from the Shepherd Center, it seems like for some of them, you know, going down to the county jail and, and that's not, that's not enough of a, of a, not a punishment-
Deterrant.
Deterrant, right? So obviously, the resources of food and the other help that the Shepherd Center gives them, and you're talking about some cooperation from the Shepherd Center, and for lack of a better term, because I know three strikes may or may, probably not enough, right? But I mean, can, is there a way to set some criteria with the cooperation, you know, of the community stakeholders?
Again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be involved in that. I wouldn't even make the recommendations to them on how, how to deal with that. We deal with criminal matters and the criminal side of it. I would just ask them, as a, as a good partner and stewards of the community, to come up with some type of guidelines that would help support us on deterring that behavior.
Sure.
So that would leave that up to them. I wouldn't even want to suggest to them how to do that again. You know, that would be their choice.
Sure.
That'll be a, a very good discussion during the VOC. Questions or comments after that. I think this is going to be a very healthy discussion we'll have on that. Do we have any other questions to Major? Major Young, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We are now going to the public comments from the people in the audience. Not you, ma'am, you already spoke.
Okay.
You're not, you had close to half an hour. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Margot Lizer, 514 Ashland Avenue. I wanted to come here to speak on behalf of the homeless. Let me set the scene for you. You are a single parent with a child. You're working, earning $14 an hour at a 40-hour week. You bring home around $500 a week after taxes, and that's about $2,000 a month. Your bills are $1,200 for rent, $250 for electric, $350 for car payment, $150 for car insurance, total expenses $1,950. This, this doesn't even include groceries, cable, cell phone, gas, clothing, back-to-school supplies, et cetera. This single parent is trying, but she falls behind and gets evicted. She finds herself living out of her car with her son. Someone sees this and calls a DCF, and her son gets removed and placed in the system. She becomes despondent and begins drinking. Now, stop there, because you know how that turns out. I, we're all, like, like you said, we're all close to homelessness. We're one paycheck away. All it takes is one unexpected bill, one fender bender, one sickness, one layoff, or the pandemic. Recently, this very same commission voted to allow a big corporation from Texas to develop high-end apartments on the Walmart property. Can this single mother afford those apartments? No. Then, right after this vote, your next focus is homelessness. I don't get it. Many cities across America are building tiny homes for folks trying to get on their feet, which is what she recommended. They are proving access to mental health services, which will help those people, that 5% that's causing the problems in the community. They're improving, they're trying to fix the root causes of homelessness and try to prevent it. Mother Mears, once again, I will bring her up, the founding mother of Tarpon Springs, who was a German immigrant, left behind a legacy of love. She is known for sharing food. She grew in her garden with the community. The mural on Tarpon Avenue is a gentle reminder that we need to love each other. Those in our community that have no homes are still citizens of Tarpon Springs, and their voice and their lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christina Wayla. I reside at 53 West Tarpon Avenue. I also reside in the building that is my business. There are a lot of homeless in my particular area, and a lot of people don't realize they kind of couldn't come down there and hang down there. But what I came here to say was, I totally agree with the police chief. There is no accountability here for those people. They will continue to be arrested, they will continue to go back and do what they want to do. I'm in an area where I hear people have conversations all day long, and it echoes into my building. And the amount of people that come here from Newport Ritchie, Clearwater, and St. Pete, and they've been homeless there, and they come to Tarpon Springs because they've been basically kicked out of that system there. They are no longer allowed to have the benefits of food and shelter because they didn't follow the rules. They all know, we can go to Tarpon Springs, and we don't have to follow the rules. We can do whatever we want. So I agree that we need an accountability of some sort with those few that are having the problems. There's a few of them, they're really nice guys. Sometimes they come talk to me on my porch. It's the ones that are just causing the problem, that few percent. So developing some form of an accountability program. If I went out and I did something like that to somebody else's home or business, you can bet that my butt's going to be in a heck of a lot more trouble than theirs is. So working with the commissioners in the city and trying to find a solution, instead of trying to bring in all these people, yes, people do deserve food, don't get me wrong, but we don't want to invite in the problems and the crime and the situations that we are inviting into this town by feeding how many people we feed from other places that are bringing in that bad influence. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Hi, Tommy Frain, 1671 Autumnwood Street, Tarpon Springs. I had some comments, but I'm actually just going to talk a little off the cuff based on everything that we spoke about. First, I'm really appreciative to the city for having this event. The issue of homelessness is something that's near and dear to my heart, so I'm glad that we're having a discussion about it, rather than making any kind of rash decisions. Some of the things that I believe that we need to focus on are some of those short, medium-term, and long-term goals, right? So I think from a short term, and with all due respect to Major Young and, and the homeless outreach officers here, I don't believe that we should have a homeless outreach program within our police department. I believe that the program itself should be something that's run. I, I believe we should look at potentially having a non-uniformed individual, potentially a trained social worker, and potentially sharing that cost not only with other cities, but potentially the county as well. So you have a part-time social worker that's working here and other locales as well. And again, this is nothing against the police department at all, but their job is to enforce laws, their job. And I just don't believe that their job is, and they're, they have the ability to necessarily solve these ills, as Major Young even noted. I do want to also note, just because it was brought up, talking about instituting other ordinances, I'd really be interested in understanding what laws we do not have on the books today that would help curtail homelessness. I don't believe we have any. A lot of other cities have tried- A lot of other cities have tried it. Orlando tried bathing laws. So, you, you know, if you went into a bathroom and you were washing anything but your hands, you'd get arrested. If you were, fell asleep at a park, you could get picked on for encampment. What happened was, it was not just homeless people that were picked on, but lots of people that were maybe not the, the, the normality of, or the norms of society, as Major Young said. So, I just want to be careful how far we go. From a medium term, I think what the Shepherd Center has said, and part of getting another location and to have especially transitional housing is super important. We have an issue with homelessness because people do not have homes. I personally believe every single person has a right to shelter and a right to food, period, especially in America in the twenty-first century. And I believe that those issues that we see with homelessness cannot be solved if we do not get them off the street. And I've gone to talk to some of these folks, and you know, I, I just don't buy that the folks that are causing the problems are coming from out of town. Two of the women that are out there, I knew their sons, one graduated high school with me, another from Eastlake High. Another gentleman out there graduated a few years before me in Eastlake High School, fell into drugs. Another woman out there is related to Mr. Bill's Donuts family through marriage, right? Back in the day. So, we have a lot of old Tarpon folks that are here. So, I, I know there's a lot of discussions about people coming in, but I think we confuse the folks that are coming in for some of these temporary services like food, and we say, oh, people are coming from everywhere, causing the problems, and then we're saying, oh, it's these only five percent of these homeless. Let's, we have to focus on what are the issues. I think the issues are the homeless, and I think the issue is they're here. And I believe that we can solve that through some of these transitional housing. Again, I think it alleviates from the businesses. It gives, you know, it solves a problem while allowing folks to still maintain their dignity, and I think that's extremely important. Now, in a long-term goal, whether this is the city or more, the Shepherd Center, and I think, I think the city has a role in helping to lead and hopefully push our county leaders as well as our state leaders to push for permanent housing solutions for homeless. You know, especially a lot of these, you know, if we're saying chronic homeless, you know, and they don't want to get off of the street. I went down to the library after the bench removals, and I spoke to a lot of the folks down there, and I heard the same thing over and over. There are, excuse me, there are a lot of preconditions to a lot of more permanent services such as housing. And a lot of those preconditions, these folks cannot meet. We talk about the issues with mental illness, we talk about the issues with addiction. So, well, I'll go ahead and leave my time there. But again, thank you very much for this issue. And again, I hope you look at solving the root causes of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Do we have anybody else for us to speak?
I did want, you asked for other groups that do have food service in Tarpon, and there is another group, and I don't think the police have ever been called, but maybe once, we work in the St. Timothy parking lot on Saturdays. It's a division of the Dream Center, we're adopt-a-block. We do have to-go bags for homeless, and we do have unprepared foods for people that still have a kitchen. So, there are other groups in town. We also work with our code board if the, if folks have issue that they're unable physically, money-wise to fix, we'll also go to their house. We paint, we do yard cleanup. So, there are other groups in town. And although I do work at Shepherd, and I think that COVID has exacerbated the issue, where we used to be able to be at a different church and people were spread out, and they could come and dine inside and then move back out, it was less obvious, the same folks, but we also used to get seniors who were just lonely, who could come and sit down and eat and visit. And with COVID, we're not able to seat our folks inside the Hope Center and move them out. It's unfortunate that the Hope Center is downtown. I've said this for years. It's too bad, the whole thing, Shepherd Center, Hope Center, wasn't farther out on a bus stop, away from businesses and homes, but we have what we have. But I did want to point out that there are other groups in town that are helping, and there are some folks that really are never going to fit into any kind of temporary housing. They just, it's just never going to work for them. So, I don't know if we're just hitting ourselves in the head, but appreciate y'all talking about this. Maybe we can find some partial measures, and it's just a, a difficult problem. I'm not sure Tarpon Springs can solve it, but we can take little steps and see what we can get to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Ms. Wade is a little bit of a provider. May I ask her one question?
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Wade, how many people do you feed on Saturday morning?
At adopt-a-block?
Yes.
You know, we have different parts. We deliver boxes of food for folks to prepare, and we've just increased, because we've gone around and door knocked and been to areas, it varies quite a bit. We usually have twenty-five, I'm going to call them homeless bags for a better, no other way to put it, and last week, we had thirty-five boxes of food to prepare that people picked up and another thirty-five that we delivered.
Twenty-five meals and then thirty, or thirty-five boxes?
Thirty-five boxes that we delivered and thirty-five that folks picked up. And this would, cannot be ready-made meals. For the homeless, we have sandwiches.
That's what I was getting, they're not ready-made meals.
And it was a little hard to follow Ada on some of that. You know, there's a two-pronged approach at Shepherd, or three-pronged, people that pick up groceries, people that pick up a hot meal for lunch.
Right.
And then the deliveries, too. She's so familiar with it, it was hard to track without knowing what was going on. But I wanted to make that clear also, that Shepherd has, when she's talking about, there's a box for people that can, if they have a place to cook, and then our, out the back door for the lunches for folks that don't have a place to cook.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Sure, thank you.
Julia, this is the, the same service that Ms. Ada talked about earlier, right?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, this is the same service, this is the, the same food that is actually the Shepherd Center was providing?
No, this is a whole, it's funded through the Dream Center in Largo, and they have these branches on Saturdays, and we happen to have a Tarpon branch.
Okay.
So, it has nothing, although we, although we do talk to them, when it's, we'd had a big Christmas event, we've had toys and Santa and things for a hundred and fifty or two hundred families. When it's turkey time, we try not to have a turkey available at Shepherd Center and through us and through Salvation Army. We try to coordinate, are they on your list, are they on our list, so that each family gets something, but I don't know how to say this nicely, but they're not selling the rest of it.
Thank you for volunteering, thank you so much.
Oh, sure, no problem. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Everyone, thank you. My name is Jeannie Vaughn. I work as the Outreach Supervisor at the Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center. And I just want to say, I've been in this position since, since July. We opened the Hope Center in August. And with regard to accountability, I agree with what the officer said. And we have worked to build relationships with the clients that we have because they know I'm going to come get them. Because I've worked on building those relations, those kind of relationships, that they trust me enough to let me know some of the bad actors that are doing things. And, but I don't think it's a, a case of if you build it, they will come. I don't think, you know, oh, we built the Hope Center, or we're giving out all this food. It's going to cause more people to come here, not necessarily. What would these people do if we weren't here? And the final thing I want to say is that I think we all need to step back and remember, no matter how much money any of us has, we are all potentially one disaster away from the way some of these folks are living. And some of the personal stories of some really bad actors in the homeless community here. One lost a six-year-old boy. You know, I mean, some of them have some stories that I don't know if I could come back from. So, I just hope with the whole love thy neighbor theme, that you keep in mind that maybe something so traumatic has happened to them, that if it happened to you, you might not come back from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here to Lacus five one four Ashland Avenue. We've heard a lot of things tonight, and we've heard about accountability. But I also have a personal experience that I have a feeling some of these people on the street really just want to be there. That's kind of where they want to be, that's their life. I'm not sure who the gentleman's name is. He parks on the bench between the Wells Fargo and the LaFont Building across from the library. It was a cold evening a few weeks ago. I took a blanket to him. He didn't want it. He got angry that I even came up to him, said, get away from me. This is my space, get out of here, this is my space. What are you doing? What do you want? I said, I'm just trying to help you. Here's a blanket. I don't want it. Get away. So, there are some people that, you know, we may not be able to reach. And I understand some people here in the business community who have properties downtown and in the central area would like to see the homeless gone. Creates a bad image. We're a tourist town, we don't want to have those pictures out there. And I'm a little concerned that all the talk is putting out this facility out on the outskirts of town like they're third-class people, that that's where they have to be on the outskirts. Well, maybe not so far on the outskirts where they're dis-socialized. Because part of what has been spoken about is relationships. And if you place them out like on a farm out there, where they're just out there by themselves and they're not socializing with the rest of the community, and the community not seeing that they're humans also, then you get that chasm. Now, as far as solutions, it was mentioned about a facility, and Margot mentioned earlier about towny houses. I'm going to show you something here, Business Observer. See that? Business paper. Not, not a homeless paper. Page four, Small Successes. There's nothing tiny about the tiny home market. It's a big business nationwide, including on Florida's west coast. And there's about Dan Dubrowski's setup, Wisconsin-based Escape Homes, recently announced it will expand its escape Tampa Bay Village from about ten homes to about forty homes. Community in Thonassasses Hillsborough County, debuted in spring twenty twenty, has since been a frenzy of demand. We've had daily inquiries, up to thirty-five thousand a day. Real estate is a little bit out of whack right now. The van is accelerating rapidly, through COVID-19 on top, and people are trying desperately to get out of condos and apartments. And further in the article, they're saying that they're trying to find other places. Sarasota is where affordable housing is a hot topic, is on the list of possible locations, but he says the local government hasn't been the friendliest to the idea. So, that's an idea that maybe needs to be looked at. And also, in the past, that can actually probably contest to this, I remember when we were on the board, the city foreclosed on properties that was owned by Bobby Fischer, the chess champion, and they foreclosed on his property because he didn't want to come back to the States because he was in not good standing with the President Bush at the time. So, they foreclosed on his properties, and eventually we sold that to the Habitat for Humanity. And as the gentleman mentioned also, about taking the police department out of the homeless area. Now, I do agree they have a certain role, but I was a little disappointed that there was nobody here for mental health, a psychologist, a psychiatrist, to maybe discuss the psychological aspects of how to solve this. I know I have run out of time, but Ms. Veronica Weller has offered to donate me another two minutes. So, I think we need to do some outreach in that regard, because a lot of these people, as it's been discussed, have mental issues. They've gone through trauma. We have peace for Tarpon. Was anybody from them asked to come to speak tonight? Because they deal with a lot of these people. So, before you go making a decision tonight about what the city should do, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, and even as Major Young mentioned, put a, a group together to discuss some of these options. Invite a mental health practitioner. Invite somebody else from, who handles these types of people to maybe give you some advice about how to approach them. And also, as it was mentioned, to look at some other cities so you can find compassionate, empathetic ways to get people to be accountable. As the gentleman mentioned, you don't want to go too far. You don't want to have it so if someone's sitting on a bench for twenty minutes, they're arrested, just because it's after dark. So, there's a lot more to this homeless issue that needs to be looked at, and I would say that you can't decide tonight what needs to be done, but you can set a path forward. And when you do so, remember, Jesus Christ, what did he say? Leave your possessions behind and follow me. Well, if you leave your possessions behind, you don't got nothing. You're homeless. But if you follow the Lord, and you pray, and you look for the right way, you'll find your guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else from the audience who would like to speak? Do we have anyone from the business community who would like to speak?
How you guys doing? My name is Michael Kandodakis, eight thirty-two Riverside Drive. Also, we have a property at, on Tarpon Avenue, a few doors down from that lady over there. I agree with everything everybody's saying tonight. These people do need help. They do deserve food, they do deserve shelter. However, you know, showing up to the office in the morning and, and finding human waste and, you know, beer bottles every morning and stuff like that, getting complaints from my tenants that we depend on to pay our mortgage at our office, that, you know, they're being harassed by homeless people in the morning. It's, it's tough, and you know, obviously, you don't want to shun anyone, everybody deserves a fair shake, but the accountability thing, I think, is a strong point, and I know we need to work together, and there's no snap-your-finger solution to it, but something needs to change. I don't know if maybe eliminating a bus stop or two, or the benches, I, I don't know. I know benches got taken out from the library, now they're on Court Street, or Court Street? I don't know, but it's good to have everybody in here working together, and hopefully we can come to a, the solution that's getting things better than they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak?
Us, hind twenty-nine Oakview Road, and we also own business downtown in Tarpon Avenue. And not to repeat everything that everyone said, but Michael hit the nail on the head. I agree with everything everyone said here tonight. We applaud the efforts of all the organizations, the Shepherd Centers, the churches, all the volunteers. I am someone who frequently has to call the police in the city about issues. We have a public restroom next to our building, and every morning, I go around our sidewalks on our building and, and clean the sidewalks, and not to, you know, go into it with detail, but there's a lot of things that we pick up, and there's human excrement on our buildings, and, you know, people bathe in the bathrooms, and anyway, but I do want to help people, but but there is that small fraction, as Major Young said, that causes issues. And, and I know that we can come together as a community, as we always do, because we have a fine community. We have a fine, everybody up there, city manager, the Commissioners, the police chief, our Officer Boone, everybody, they come by almost daily and check with us, because we've had issues. I've had Commissioner Costa Vatico, I apologize. I apologize, I called him on a Sunday. We had somebody screaming at the top of their lungs at my back door. And we've had people passed out on my back door. But we've come together to solve this, this, these problems. And we do have problems, but I know that we, if we all work together, we will solve them and, and help people. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers who would like to come to the podium? Do we have any other public comments here now? Okay, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails in this hour?
We have. The first one, Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, folks experience homelessness for many reasons, and there are no simple solutions or one size fits all responses. The issue is a multi-layered and diverse as the folks who make up our homeless population. There are many chronically homeless folks, to be sure, but we also have thousands of homeless students throughout our county. A growing number are becoming part of the ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Group, and could become homeless by missing a single paycheck or experiencing an illness. Not all homeless folks are equally visible. Research points to common denominations, if we look at root causes of homelessness. Witnessing or experiencing violence, especially as children, but these can be compounded by ongoing violent experiences over the course of a lifetime, domestic violence, interpersonal violence, and even war. This creates a multi-generational challenge. Because the challenge is vast, we must not only look to our existing community partners working diligently to address this, but also seek new solutions. Let's explore what other communities are doing across the country to see what might work here to help us, sorry, here to help dig us out of the ongoing challenge now worsening with the added stressor of COVID. I would like to see an ad hoc committee or task force to seek solutions. The solutions must include a community response as well as support through policy decisions. I am happy Commissioner Connor Donovan represents Tarpon on the Homeless Leadership Alliance and sure that experience brings him a different level of understanding this complex issue. It certainly opened my eyes when I had the honor of serving on that board, but even so, their focus was often on St. Pete, on St. Petersburg or South County and not way up here in Tarpon Springs. The decision to remove the benches in front of the library had unintended consequences. Homeless folks sat there to be sure, but so did Bill, a Vietnam veteran, who told me, I have a place to live, but this is my place to go, to be with people. I sit and read my Bible. I don't bother anybody. Bill isn't the only one using the library benches as a community social hub. The bottom line is that if someone is living here in Tarpon Springs, whether or not they have a home, they are part of our community and we must see them as such as we move forward. Best, Robin Sanger, Peace for Tarpon founding director. Next email. Thank you all for the move towards solution for the health of all. After decades of listening and serving with community, a few comments to add to what I have already read from the Shepherd Center, the police department, and the Pinellas County point in time. The need for low-income housing is great and would help in our resolve. Years ago, the mayor, police department, Shepherd Center, churches, and the homeless coalition sat down to work towards solutions. From that gathering came the vision for a day use center with accountability now realized in the Hope Center. One clear directive was not just reacting to homelessness, but taking an approach that worked towards prevention, largely for struggling low-income persons and families to keep them from becoming homeless. We identified three key areas. One, healthcare, which Mike Bilirakis helped to facilitate in the vision of the Community Health Center providing healthcare for those with health, without health insurance. Two, food, which the community through the Shepherd Center helped to address by providing daily meals and food resources. And three, housing. May God bless our discernment and peace be with you all in Christ's services. Pastor Kurt Snare, eight fifty-four Riverside Drive, Tarpon Springs. Next email. Good evening, Mayor Alahuzis, Vice Mayor Carr, Commissioners, Chief Cochin, and City Manager Mark Lacoris. My name is Rebecca Loyal. I live at twelve oh four Golf Road and work at Salon Touche at two ten South Pinellas Avenue in the arcade building next to the Shepherd Center. I felt, I felt for the commission to consider the impact of the chronic homeless in the community, its residents, business owners, and employees of local establishments. These behaviors are observable and prevalent, having been a problem for some time, but seeming to have increased over time. They affect the health, safety, and overall welfare of our citizens. Issues that I have observed while working, I have also attached a few pictures and Commissioners, those were provided for you on the dais tonight. Parking problems on Boyer Street West on North Side of Shepherd Center. No parking signs were placed up for the South Side of Boyer Street due to traffic issues. However, on days when the Shepherd Center has free food, the street is often lined with illegally parked vehicles, even up to the stop sign at Pinellas Avenue. This causes a traffic hazard and issues navigating the road. It appears that workers not only allow it without advising people of the no parking, but have been observed helping people carry groceries to their vehicles. The problem is that the illegal parking causes issues with people trying to drive on Boyer Street. When a car turns westbound on Boyer Street, they can come head on toward another vehicle trying to drive eastbound, which had to drive on the wrong side of the road to pass the illegally parked cars. This is dangerous. It made even more dangerous when a vehicle then attempts to exit the parking lot from the rear of the arcade. Sometimes the car in the parking lot will then have to try to reverse through the parking lot while other customers may be attempting to back out of the parking spaces. Other times, although there is parking on the other side or in front of the Shepherd's Center, the people that frequently frequent the outreach will park in the parking lot for the businesses at the arcade, leaving us employees and patrons no parking spots. Another issue has been the ongoing issue with littering, sleeping, panhandling of the homeless on the property at the arcade. We will have to call the police to deal with these issues so that they do not interfere with us trying to earn a living. The businesses have worked well with the police department and the police have also checked the area to deal with the issues, but it is time consuming and annoying for both of us. These issues include trash and beer cans, littering the property, urine and feces on the front and back walkways, approaching customers or workers, following them, or asking for money. This hurts our business. While we understand the Shepherd Center intent to help others, we also would like their help in dealing with these issues. The problems occur while people are congregating before or after visiting the Shepherd Center, but are even more prevalent at feeding times. In fact, many will come onto the property, eat their food, discard their scraps or partially eaten food, and leave their containers on the sidewalk, often with beer cans. They will spread their personal belongings out on the walkway, sit and eat, litter, drink right in front of our businesses while customers try to enter or leave. It seems like the Shepherd Center is content to hand out food and not be concerned with how these individuals affect the nearby residents, business owners, or store workers. They can cause issues nearby, yet have no ramifications from or accountability, simply returning the next day to do the same. We have witnessed arguments and fights, even hearing the yelling while inside our business with patrons. This affects our ability to work and can impact a commissioner, I'm sorry, a customer's willingness to return for business. Whether they are concerned for their safety, want to avoid conflict, are disgusted with the remains left behind, and other concerns. Not only are customers concerned about these issues, employees of these businesses are as well. To be honest, these issues are often caused by the same basic group of people who seem to want to be able to do whatever they want at any time. It appears that they don't care about their personal situation and definitely don't care about others. On top of that, new faces appear and begin to conduct themselves in the same way due to the pattern of behavior displayed. They don't seem to care about getting arrested either because they continue to come back and continue their behavior. However, I do understand the desire to help those less fortunate than others, but it must include accountability of those receiving services. Without that, nothing will be, nothing will change for the betterment of all involved. The only change would be that the issues would multiply and/or become worse. Something must be done to address the ongoing issues, to not only ensure that it does not get worse, but to lessen the effect felt by members of the community. We proudly attempt to keep our city beautiful and thriving, maintaining our historic feel, remaining current with trends. We owe it to all of our citizens to live up to the goal, not only in words, but reality. Thank you, Rebecca Loyah. And the last one. To whom it may concern, I am not a resident of this lovely city, but I had worked with here for 20 years and I frequent businesses throughout the city during my time off. I love to bring friends and relatives from out of town to Tarpon to show off this gem of a community that I've been lucky enough to be a part of. In the past five years, I've noticed an extreme increase in the number of homeless individuals throughout the city. I am a client of Rebecca Loyah at Salon Touche in the downtown corridor. When my daughter and I visit her, we are always on high alert. The homeless population is very present in the area and at times asks for money. It's very uncomfortable. Similar situations have occurred, occurred up at TJ Maxx in Panera. There is such beauty and welcoming feeling to this city, but the influx of these individuals is very off-putting. I do think that they are a nuisance to this community and a drain on resources that could be used elsewhere. Thank you for hearing my concern. Sincerely, Allison Harris. And that is all that I have for emails.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
If anyone is online and would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hands at this time, sir. If you can please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Susan Conrad, 2044 Barracuda Court, Holiday, Florida. I am the grant writer for the Shepherd Center. Also, wear a number of other hats. I have been involved with them since they were located at the Court Street facility. So probably one of the longest-term volunteers and staff over the years. I wanted to respond to Commissioner Tara Panney regarding his questions on grant writing. The, the pass-through of the food that comes in and is given the $2 per pound then becomes a pass-through as it goes out the door, which sometimes is the same day as it comes in. And in writing grants, the majority of what we are pursuing is for the issues that we are here to talk about today. One of the most important ones is the mental health aspect of those that are homeless. We wrote a grant several years ago that brought us the Hope Center and brought us the staffing with the largest component being the mental health professional that is working every day with those that are homeless, working on goals. And 85% of those that enter one-on-one counseling right now, mostly via telephone with her, are achieving the goals that they set. Some of them are just short-term, like keeping the appointment, but some of them are longer term and have moved them from homelessness into housing, into jobs. We've not talked about that. So many talked about that's what we want for them, but the programs that the Hope Center has implemented is already seen. We are exceeding the goals that we sent, we set with our grant providers for this program, and we've continued to exceed those goals. So I think that's critically important. Another point that I want to make is, a number of years ago, Pinellas Health and Human Services did a study on looking at poverty and food deserts throughout Pinellas County, and there were five. Most of them were mid to South County. There was only one in North County, which was Tarpon Springs. And we have tremendous poverty in Tarpon Springs. I had a person who volunteered, started volunteering with the Shepherd Center about a year and a half ago, and she had never realized, you know, the poverty, she never knew anything about the areas like Mango Circle. And because we have the poverty we have, all those people that are in our public housing are a step away from being homeless. And some of our homelessness has become from those areas. And when COVID hit and people couldn't pay their rents, you know, some of them were evicted before the eviction stays were put in place, and some have been evicted since. And where are they going to go? Because they've been evicted, they have no good history to go someplace else. So now they're living in their cars. I recently, for probably the 15th year, coordinated the gift program for the Shepherd Center. I had three single mothers tell me that they were basically living in their car at that time and would be celebrating Christmas with their children in their cars. So it is, it's important to know that the Shepherd Center is trying to do the right thing. I greatly appreciate the discussion about being accountable for behavior. And I think that knowing the people that I work with at the Shepherd Center, we are all in on really pursuing that and looking how we can make a difference in getting people to be accountable. Behavior is what we see. And in being able to see them behave appropriately, that's what we all want. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please connect the next person?
So we have a Douglas Notoj, and unfortunately, his Zoom is an older version and cannot be allowed to talk at this time. If you can, try calling the number via a phone in order to get back in. I'll allow the next person in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Mike Eisner, and I'm at fifteen fifteen Riverside Drive, Tarpon Springs. And I do want to thank mayor, vice mayor, the commissioners, chief coaching, city manager. This is an amazing thing to listen to. I do agree with almost everything I've heard tonight, but one thing that I haven't heard is, on most projects that the city does, we usually have a expert that comes in and gives us a, you know, a presentation because we can't be the only city that has a problem with homeless and with feeding. So what I don't understand is why we don't have somebody of an expert opinion to come in to give us their opinion of what we could do. Should we build shelters? Is it better to build a shelter in the outskirts? Is it better to build it in town? If we provide better provisions, will we have more people, more influx from Clearwater and from Pasco? We walk a fine line. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We walk a fine line between helping and hurting our city. And I feel for the people that have businesses in town where they have to come and find things in the morning. And at the same time, I have, my heart goes out to, for the people that want to feed and help the homeless as I do as well. But I would like to hear from somebody who has some history in what we could do where we get our most bang for our buck. I've heard opinions of people talking about bringing in special counselors. Right now, the Major Young, who's the guy that's dealing with most of these issues, is the most experienced with what's going on. So I, I just would like to hear from somebody else. I know that you're not ready to make a decision this evening, but that's the route I would like to. I'd like to hear more from somebody who's had experiences, especially successful experiences with the homeless. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. But I do want to thank everybody. My heart bleeds for these people. I do know we're all a paycheck away from being in that position. And I just want to thank you all for your time and your concern to help this problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please allow the next person.
If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Sarah Colores at 906 West Bay Shore Drive. I want to thank the commission for making such a concerted effort to find a solution to this homeless problem that's negatively impacting the local businesses and families who take so much pride in Tarpon Springs. My husband and I are both members at the Anytime Fitness next door to the Shepherd Center. And there have been multiple times where we have been parked to go into the gym and witness people busting the Shepherd Center, pick up their food, walk across the street, tie up their arms and shoot up their drugs of choice in public. I've been parked as they knock on my windows and I ultimately have to leave because I don't feel comfortable exiting my car. As my husband and I begin to build our family in this community, one that we really do take so much pride in, he's born and raised here. That is not something that children and law-abiding, taxing citizens of this community need to witness in the small downtown corridor as we go to shop or just participate in our daily activities. We've witnessed the homeless believe themselves on local sports fields and the children of this, that the children of this community play on. And that's just quite unacceptable. I also work in the mental health space and I fully understand that this needs to be a priority of addressing that issue first and foremost, because that is at the root cause of this. However, I feel like the proposed solution that the member of the Shepherd, or the coordinator of the Shepherd Center brought up of relocating a facility up on the north Anclot area would be fantastic for also temporarily housing some of the homeless members. But also my proposal would be maybe they could possibly move their food distribution center up there. So these transients are not busting into the city just for them to pick up their food and roam around the city and causes, even though it is a very small portion of the homeless community that is causing these issues. They would be at a, at a different center outside of the downtown corridor. And I think that that would probably eliminate a big portion of the problem that these business owners were mentioning. While we can still serve those homeless and that would be a fabulous place to expand their ability to have mental health professionals out there and cater to their needs and really figure out all of those issues at a centralized location where it's not negatively affecting the community and the businesses. So thank you for letting me get on. I just thought I would join in as it is definitely important to my family and I and the entire community of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
I'll allow the next person in. If you can state your name and address for the record. We have a Mr. Mark Antonio. Are you available?
Can you hear me okay?
Now again, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, Mark Antonio, 1428 Castle Works Lane. My wife and I own the hair salon Salon Touche adjacent to the Shepherd Center. We recognize the same few homeless people engaging in criminal behavior over and over again. We totally agree with Major Young that criminal behavior without consequence will not change that behavior. And we support an idea of some consequence that will affect the change to that behavior. I believe, we believe the problem is truly a small percentage that is causing us to all be focused on this issue. That it's uncomfortable for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Jeb, allow, please allow.
If you can state your name and address for the record.
This is Kathy Johansson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, 2284 Sixth Avenue, Largo. I am currently have the privileges serving as a faith community nurse at the Shepherd Center for about four months now. So I'm very aware of what's going on and what you all are talking about tonight. And thank you, as everyone has thanked you for what, for this discussion, this opportunity. I just had a couple of thoughts here. Moving forward, when you decide and you're making your choices, there's a wonderful community in Clearwater, you're probably aware of it, called the Homeless Emergency Project. And they, they've come together to build a sense of community and help for the homeless in a certain, well, it's probably a large area, three or four city blocks. But they might be a good person to consult for, you know, moving forward with this project of, of moving the Hope Center and the emergency housing out of the city limits. And I thought Ron Hadad, who spoke earlier, had some amazing help to provide with his volunteers that he has, what he had 12 or 13 different civic organizations. We have a lot of people that want to help, but we need a platform to start making some committees to, to assist you all. So in your planning tonight, maybe we could have a committee that we could join to come together and help you all with these problems, whether it's mental health or drug abuse or other things that have caused this problem. The accountability that you've mentioned, one suggestion that I had and I've seen work in other places is just like when you get a ticket for speeding and you have to go to a class. You know, that's something that we could provide at the Shepherd Center, a class that the homeless would need to take in order to come back to have the services that are provided where they could be just some life skills and some, you know, things that, that maybe they've forgotten or never learned. That would be an amazing thing to, for a judge to recommend that they, they attend a life skills class as a part of their accountability. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, you know, it seems to be that access to care and food and shelter is the main thing we're talking about here. And if you have public bathrooms that are provided in the area, if they could be policed through, and maybe they are, but through the night and open with some opportunity for them, the homeless to use them instead of the streets. People that are high on drugs aren't going to know the difference, but there are some people that might like to have that opportunity. And if you already have those in place with a little bit of extra care that might help to alleviate some of these problems. And I just wanted to say also that I think one of the success stories for the Shepherd Center is that we have just procured the mobile medical unit to come back to the Shepherd Center. They've been gone for over a year now for different reasons. And so the homeless now will have medical care that can help with some of the medications that they need to help with some of the mental health issues. So as we begin to work together and address these issues, you know, I think it's, we're going to see a change. So thank you.
Allow the next person in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Douglas Notoj, Flying Fish, Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Police Chief, thanks for the opportunity. As a resident of the city, I think a few things that need to be brought to light here. One, we need to look at lifestyle versus need. When I drive by, I work out of my home, I see it every day up and down Alt 19. It's the same people. Many of them filling bags of food and heading back home. Is it really a need or like Major Young said, a lifestyle? If it's a lifestyle, it's really not the community's response to feed that lifestyle if someone doesn't want to work and they're mentally and physically able. That's got to be separated. We need to balance this. We're a small community. There is a denial factor here coming out of the Shepherd Center and I am the first one to help my neighbor. We give money to our church to help feed people, to take care of individuals all over the world. But denial isn't going to fix the problem. Transportation, go to the bus stops at Walmart. Go to the bus stops on Alt 19 and see how many people get off those buses that are not from this community. We have to take care of our community first, but we have to balance the load that comes into the city. We can't be that for all. And there needs to be a balance put in. Transportation is clearly an issue because the number of people that come to our bus stops and get off to go get fed up to Shepherd Center. But yet we're talking about moving a Shepherd Center now to a rural part of the Northern County where there is no public transportation, where now we invite more people from Pasco down into our community, which we can't service as it is. So there has to be a balance of what we can realistically do for the community and our closest neighbors. And if we can take care of those, spread our outreach out. But transportation, parking, access is clearly needed. And moving this to the northern side of the county to a rural area where we already have secondary prison release homes into areas where it is rural, we will encourage encampments. That is the wrong thing to do. You can't hide the issue. Put it on Alt 19 or on 19 where there's good public transportation and people can have access. The buses run and we can feed people and it's visible. But not in downtown. We appreciate the fact that, Mayor, you're bringing this to the forefront, but putting it in the heart of downtown and affecting our businesses is doing a disjustice for those that need it and for the community. The other part that bothered me tonight was when the Shepherd Center said, the more we feed, the more we can get for grants. So is it really about just the community here or bigger for Pinellas County? And I think that is part of our balance that we need to do. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I'll allow the next person in.
Hello?
Yes, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Bruce Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yes, this is a very complex issue. And it certainly will not be resolved with one hearing tonight. So I'd like you to consider having ongoing hearings. And not just for months, for years. Another thing I'd like to acknowledge is that you allowed emails to be read into the record. I appreciate that. So you have to hear Robin Sager's email. But I want everyone to know that at the Anclot Harbor hearing, three commissioners voted to not allow emails to be read into the record. They didn't want it. They didn't want anybody to hear the hundreds of emails in opposition to that project, three and a half hours worth. So I'm glad that you finally seen the light. That the people need to be heard. Now, as far as repercussions for people being homeless, treatment is more important than punishment. These people need help. Treatment programs would be much better than jail time. There was a book called Chasing the Scream, I believe it was, where they did a study, you know, they checked out that test they did with the rat. And they had water in one bottle and they had heroin in the other one. And the rat would drink the heroin until it died. And then about 100 years after that, scientists looked at it and said, wait a minute, let's redo this. That rat was in a cage. So they made this elaborate setting for the rat, gave him friends and family and all kinds of playthings. And he would test the heroin. But he wouldn't drink it until he died. It's about hope. You got to give people hope. If they're in a cage or they feel like they're in a cage, they perceive that their life is in a cage. They have no hope. So there was a program up in Canada, another one in Europe, where the government said, hey, let's interview these people, find out what they can do. And then one guy says, well, I like to work on cars. So they go and they talk to a local mechanic and say, hey, if we pay half this guy's salary, will you give him a job? And guess what? The guy never touched heroin again because he got to do what he wanted to do. That's what it's all about. These people want to be productive, but they're not given a chance. And they were abused, badly abused, most of them as children. And so, yeah, the guy on the park bench just didn't want the blanket. I mean, I get it. There's sometimes we all feel like that. We don't want that kind of help. We want a different kind of help. Thank you.
Mr. Jeb, do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. We do have another raised hand. I'll allow them in. If you can please state your name and address for the record. We have a Mr. John Consolino. If you can unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is John Consolino, 286 Arbor Drive East in Palm Harbor. I am the president of the board of the Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there tonight because I'm quarantined for COVID exposure, unfortunately. But I did want to say that I have heard the whole proceeding. I'm very pleased with everything I've heard. And I want the mayor and the vice mayor and the police chief and the whole commission to understand that the message will be carried to the board of the Tarpon Springs Shepherd Center. And we will work toward positive change and be thrilled to work together with you to make things go in the, in a correct direction. And that's why I called in.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. We have another raised hand. I'll allow them in.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Cubley. I'm associated with St. Timothy's. We provide feeding for the homeless on birthdays. I would just like to commend the Shepherd Center for doing what they do for us and for the people and for the human beings that we have in Tarpon Springs that need our help. I do recommend that for Commissioner Townsend's suggestion and the chief of police's suggestion, get together with other stakeholders and small groups. Try to cause a, come to a cause and effect. If only 5% of the people are causing the problem, let's try to eliminate that and go forward. We have a great city in Tarpon. I may have to move there. But I do appreciate all of the people for your help and your consideration of tonight's meeting. Thank you so much for your time.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay. The public portion of the meeting is now closed. We're going to take a five-minute reset and we'll come back to have the Board of Commissioners' comments and discussion. So we'll be back in five minutes. The town hall meeting at 9:22 PM. And we go to the Board of Commissioners' comments and discussions. I'd like to thank everyone for providing us your input and your suggestion. As everybody else says, the homeless is a complex and very sensitive issue. And it's not only here in Tarpon Springs, but in Pinellas County and in the state of Florida. In the city of Tarpon Springs is one of the few cities that we have the homeless outreach program. We have two policemen assigned to provide services to the homeless people. As Major Young stated, the outreach program has been very successful, providing help to the homeless people, connecting them with agencies to get help. Agencies such as the Pinellas Hope, Directions of Living, Pinellas Safe Harbor, Veterans Administration, YMCA, and Religious Community Services. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask our city attorney. We know homeless is not a crime. In Tarpon Springs, the camping in public, sleeping in public, begging in public, is that a violation to ordinance that we have in place?
Is that a violation what now?
Any violation to any ordinance that we have in place in Tarpon Springs.
The city does have a solicitation ordinance in place. Our office has written some amendments, some recommended amendments to that ordinance and provided them to the police department. The police department, to my understanding, is reviewing those. I think they had some concern about how they would be able to be administered. The United States Supreme Court and the rest of the federal courts have indicated that local governments can adopt ordinances that deal with aggressive panhandling. Where the panhandler makes someone feel uncomfortable or follows them around or whatnot, but that the simple act of asking someone for money is protected speech. And so there's going to be a continuum of what kind of conduct is, like I heard one of the citizens talk about not wanting to go to the hair salon because people ask her for money. That's understandable, but that's their right, you know, within certain conduct to be able to say, you know, I'm poor, can you give me some money? And what are the other types of conducts that you asked about?
Well, the sleeping in public and camping in public.
And so there, the city of St. Petersburg, as y'all are already aware, went through a lot of litigation. So did the city of Sarasota. They did camping ordinances, no camping ordinances. And basically, the federal appeals court said, again, you can, within reason, adopt time, place, and manner restrictions on homeless people sleeping in certain areas. But that's where providing them someplace to go, like if the police come to remove them, they would have to have someplace to go. And I know at least at some point, Pinellas County had adopted, you know, sort of a central place for those people to go. And so I think if it, part of what I was listening for tonight is what are the issues that really the police department's facing? Because I didn't hear, I didn't really hear sleeping, you know, public sleeping as being an issue. But I think once those issues are identified and the police department decides what exactly do we want to deal with in terms of the conduct? I think that's when you could, you know, our office can work with the department to, if you don't have current ordinances that exactly deal with it, like you don't really currently have a camping ordinance, that we can come up with something that the courts would agree with.
Listening to the comments and to Major Young, they said 5% of the people that are actually causing the problem for all the others to be affected. So what can we do to stop this 5% for ruining for everybody else? This is what I'm saying.
And Mayor, I was sharing with the major during the break that one of the, if we, if we were a grant provider for Hope Center or for any other provider, then in our grant contract, we can put in certain terms and conditions to say, look, in exchange for this public support, you're going to have to ensure that your people, your clients don't engage in this behavior, don't have these particular records. And if they do, then you're not going to be able to have our financial support. But since we don't have that kind of a thing, my recommendation to the major is really, and you heard the executive director call in tonight and make a public commitment that he was going to deal with the situation, work with the city, deal with the situation. And so my recommendation is that the city get with him, that police department, I could certainly participate in that conversation. And the rules that they would have to have for those, that small group of people who are creating the problem would be generated by them. It would be that agency's rules for their clients. And their rules would have to say, look, you guys are, we're a part of this community. You're causing problems in this community. And so any one of our clients who are causing problems in this community, here's what the rules are now going to be. We're going to publish them on the wall or whatever. And if you have so many convictions for this or so many violations for that, and the city's not going to tell them what that is, but they need to come up with some triggers, then you are not going to be allowed to have service from us. And hopefully, that would ameliorate the situation. But in terms of what we can do regulatorily as a governmental agency to force the center, you know, unless we, unless we can prove and bring a case, which I don't think, I don't sense that there's a political will to do to sue the Hope Center for public nuisance, because at some point, you can say under the public nuisance law, what you're doing as an agency is generating a public nuisance. But I don't think that the city really is at the point where it wants to go that way. I think everybody wants to have a cooperative resolution. So I think my recommendation would be, let's try that first. If the agency can sort of right its own ship, then let's, and the police department can work with them on that, let them do that. And then if they can't, then the city might have to go towards more of a public nuisance enforcement where you're not really dealing with the individual homeless person, but you're kind of telling the agency, you're the one that's feeding them. And they wouldn't be here if you weren't feeding them. So you have to, you have to come up with something.
Thank you. Well, the people of Tarpon Springs are very generous. Our local organizations and churches providing hot meals every day. And I tell you, I am very appreciative to the Shepherd Center, to the churches, and to all their organizations that are providing meals to the homeless, to everyone in need. Just good programs though, attracting homeless people from surrounding cities to Tarpon Springs in order to have a hot meal. And they're creating problems for the downtown people, for our local businesses. And we, not only we receive many complaints, but also we, you know, we'll be getting many photographs from different businesses and and we can see that as well. The police department is working hard trying to to, you know, to control the situation, but they need the help of, you know, and the cooperation of all the organizations and the churches. Recently, we removed the benches from the library. And yes, it did help there. The police report though shows that by removing the benches from the library, the people, of course, they had to go to someplace else. So what we did, we just relocated the problem to another location and the problem is still there. So we cannot keep going and remove the benches. So we need to come, some kind of a solution. One of the suggestions that I heard from Mr. Palaidis and as well from Major Young is to create a small committee to address the hotspot issue. And I noticed Mr. Palaidis is not here, but I would like to ask our Major Young, if he can explain what kind of a benefit that we have by creating a small committee.
I think it's important that we get the stakeholders together in the community. So everybody has an equal voice. And then we get the buy-in of everybody and the cooperation would lend itself towards making that a situation that we're able to deal with in the community.
These small committee, these stakeholders, they're going to be represented in. Are they going to stop the 5% that they're creating the problem?
Well, again, I think ultimately that would be the goal and the objective. But at least it would be something working towards that. And maybe we can also look at development of if we do need ordinances or anything else that can help to curtail that behavior.
Okay. You know, creating a small committee that's not, you know, it's easy to do. I'm just not sure that's going to be a fixed of the problem that we're facing. Probably is going to help some. I'd like to hear from fellow commissioners on that. And I also agree with the suggestion of Vice Mayor Carr that he had made in the meeting a couple of months ago. And also Commissioner Vaticura's alluded to the same thing, that we should have one place perhaps near the US-19 where the organizations and churches can provide hot meals to the homeless people. And I believe the city should provide some kind of a funding for that. I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, what is their thought on that? And how can we go by doing it? And if we all agree to that, then we give a direction to city manager to look for a place. Of course, with the cooperation of all the providers. And if Mr. Licorice finds a place to come back to us for us to approve it. So with that, I'd like to go to Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all for public comments tonight and personnel online. We obviously have a very passionate community, city of Tarpon Springs. I like it's back for many, many years. Thank you, Police Chief and Police Major, for the presentations and the updates on where the police is at and your proactive efforts that have been placed in years past and currently where they're at today. There's a few things I have questions for city staff, but I do want to touch base on something the mayor talked about. I am happy to support funding if there's a centralized location. If it's on US-19, where it could be a kitchen of some sort, where the churches and the Shepherd Center could go and cook hot meals and distribute hot meals. I'm happy to support funding for that from the city side on an annual basis. I do believe the city provides some type of funding to an organization. And Pinellas, I don't know if it's in St. Peter where it's at, maybe $5,000 a year. But it might be a good idea, I think, to look at those funds to move it towards actually the residents or the homeless within Tarpon Springs. And utilizing the funds in our own backyard instead of somewhere else in the county. I would support also some type of stakeholder committee. I think it's good to have some type of input from the residents here locally and also the business owners that Major Young talked about. Looking at location-wise, north of the river and an industrial park versus Highway 19, I do think Highway 19 would be more of an ideal situation. When you get north of the river, you have more developments that are going in up there. You're also I just think US Highway 19 would be a better option. So a couple of questions I have for the staff that I'd like some additional information on to come back on would be, how many public housing units are in Tarpon Springs? I understand there's a lot of I understand there's a lot of public housing within Tarpon Springs currently today. It ranges from senior housing to low income housing. Currently also, the Housing Authority has almost a whole city block west of Cops and Kids. I could be wrong, but I think a lot of those buildings are vacant or use as storage. I would like to find out what their plan is with those buildings? And is there an option to partner with the Housing Authority to do some type of housing? That was discussed tonight for transit housing or in-between housing. I don't know exactly the correct verbiage. How can the city, with the police department, work with the Shepherd Center to hold the nuisance individuals accountable? I think an individual, I think, I believe that was staffed at the Shepherd Center brought up a, a neat suggestion where it said requiring a class. So it would be if someone is arrested for a prohibited reason, similar, I think the city attorney brought something similar too, that they would be required to take some type of class, or if they don't take the class, they wouldn't be allowed any longer at the Shepherd Center. Now, I think that's something that would be welcomed by the community, although I believe Ada did mention that all are welcome for feeding. But realistically, we need to come together and say, what are the nuisances? Who's causing the nuisance issues? And how are we going to solve for that? So if we're going to continue to support nuisance and to continue to support issues like this and not hold people accountable, I don't think we're doing what the residents have asked us to do, nor are we serving the individuals. I think it's an enabling them and not necessarily helping them in that situation. I would like to ask the staff to look at what other communities have done to address the nuisance homeless issue. I think Commissioner Terry Panney brought this up last meeting. There's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. I think we can go after what some good items are in other communities and cities, locally or nationally. Another question would be, what can the county provide for funding? What can the homeless leadership board provide for funding? What can they do to help Tarpon Springs, if anything? And then are there any federal grants available? I don't think a solution's going to be determined tonight, but I think these are some questions that we should ask and have answers to, to move forward as we continue to evaluate the options available before us. I do think it's important to have some type of centralized area. I do think it's best to have it up on 19. And one further question I have too is, is there a way to partner with a, one of the motels out on US Highway 19 as an alternative? Or maybe that's happening today, I'm not, I'm not aware of it, for these individuals that need a place to stay, that are on the streets? Is there a way to provide some type of voucher? Or can the, can the city work with the Shepherd Center or other nonprofits or the county for funding for North County to create housing for, temporary housing for these individuals until they get back on their feet or find another solution to stay with a relative or relocate to be with family somewhere else? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr, just for clarification, do we have, are you agree with consensus to, for Mr. Licuress to work with the providers to create a committee? And also to have a centralized area for the seat of Tarpon Springs to provide funding?
To provide fooding or?
Funding.
Yeah, yes, both of those.
So we do have consensus on that, right?
For me, yes.
For you, yes. Commissioner Terry Panney.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, again, I mean, this is something that people within the community have wanted to talk about for a long time and we have talked about throughout the course of time, but we haven't really established a, a channel to move forward in. And I think that there was a few things that were talked about tonight, which I have some notes on. So for me, you know, I, I have compassion towards the less fortunate and obviously I think everybody on this board wants to make sure that our, that our residents are fed and have a place to sleep and have common necessities like food and shelter. I also think that based on this meeting tonight, that we all agree that there are, you know, a select few that cause the most harm and disruption to our community. So for me, I'm not willing to let this issue continue to progress at the expense of our law-abiding citizens in the business community. So the, the four notes that I made are one accountability, two strengthen ordinances, three a focus group, and then also I, I had in my notes, I didn't discuss it before, and Mr. Fran brought it up, the, a resource officer, not necessarily in the form of a traditional police officer, while Officer Boone does a fantastic job. But in terms of trying to maybe create another position, somebody who may or may not carry a badge that has more training, maybe from a social standpoint, I think would be a good thing. On accountability, that's where I'm going to look to, to the Shepherd Center and the other care providers to step up to the plate and make a good faith gesture as we come to them with solutions or ideas such as, hey, the PD has, you know, noted that we have these five individuals, they've continued to disgrace the town in one way or another, and they are a nuisance problem. And, you know, we have a form of criteria that says if they have, if they do X, Y, and Z repetitively, then they can no longer come to the Shepherd Center for service. I don't think that that is too much to ask as a community. Strengthen ordinances, that's something, Mr. Eshenfelder, that I would look for you to give some direction to this board as our legal counsel. There are clearly other ordinances that exist in other communities that speak to this issue. And I would look for you to provide those to this community or to this board of commissioners so we can have an opportunity to see what other communities are doing, which I've said in the past. So I know other communities are also faced with this as it's a, a national challenge, but I know that other communities are taking the step in the similar direction in which we are trying to take, whether it's no sleeping on bench ordinance or, you know, any other kind of ordinances that you think. You, you know the direction of this board. So please, please inform us more so and provide us with some examples that we can take and build upon. The focus group is, I think, is a good idea. I mean, we know that it can be a challenge to get this board together to handle this type of business in addition to the other business that we handle. So the focus group, I think, is a good idea and should consist of someone from the PD, this commission, and the group of providers within the community. And then as I mentioned, I think the resource officer is a good, good idea in addition to Officer Boone, not necessarily someone to carry a badge, maybe they do, but someone who certainly has more training in the social arena. So, you know, in a nutshell, those are the four things, the four takeaways that I have from this meeting. Accountability certainly being one of the bigger ones. But again, as Attorney Eshenfelder noted, the resident of the board, I think, made that, made that commitment to the board, or made that commitment tonight. So we're definitely not going to solve it tonight, but I think that those four avenues are, are good areas for us to move forward in. And Mayor, I know you're going to ask me whether or not I support the possible funding for an off-site facility for some of what we're talking about, some feeding and sheltering. I, I do support that. I think that, you know, in this day and age that we do need to be putting our money where our mouth is to a degree as it relates to the chronic homeless and, and some additional funding for mental health issues or different addictions and abuses and, and try and put the right foot forward with providing some shelter for these people. I think we can all agree that it would be nice not, not to put it on the outskirts of, or outskirts of town, but to put it in an appropriate place where there are more resources as it relates to transportation and just a better suitable place than right in the middle of our, of our business district. So I, I would support that, that notion. Obviously, it would be nice to know more about it and, you know, amount of funding, where it is, et cetera, who the other players are at, at the table. But that's what I have for tonight.
This is just to authorize the Vice Mayor to get with the, with the providers, service providers, and also look for a place. And then you will come back to us and see what's involved.
So I, I can tell you that the four things that I mentioned are more of a priority to me today.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight, spoke over Zoom. This is a really important issue. Again, I, I serve on the Homeless Leadership Alliance of Pinellas. And just, just to educate everybody on, you know, an issue that I always fight for there is more representation for North County. Because as I mentioned earlier, the Homeless Leadership Alliance is a fantastic organization. They do so much to combat homelessness in the county, but we don't have a whole lot of representation here in North County. For example, I don't work with anybody from Dunedin. I don't work with anybody from Palm Harbor, Safety Harbor, Oldsmar, Holiday. Tarpon Springs is on a little bit of an island on that board. So that's something that I'm going to continue to fight for on the HLA. And that's something, once, you know, more nominations come up, I'd love to get involved with some of our business owners, try to get more Tarpon Springs representation on that board. But as we move forward tonight, I think we need to begin a more serious dialogue with the people within our area. And I'm talking about Pasco County Government addressing the Holiday area. I'm talking about Dunedin, Palm Harbor. And that doesn't necessarily mean like the creation of a committee or something like that, but just getting with them and seeing what their data is, seeing what their current strategies are. And I think we're going to find some overlap with some of the issues that we face in those communities. And I think that can, you know, build a stronger bond here, not only with those communities, but also maybe open our eyes to something that we're not currently aware of. So moving forward from this meeting, I'd be happy to do it myself or we can direct staff, just to reach out to Pasco County Government, some of our other local cities, and see what they're currently facing, what's their homelessness status and see if there's any crossover. Regarding the small committee or focus group, whatever we've been calling it, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd be happy to be a liaison that worked on that committee. It would make sense because I'm already serving on the HLA. The only thing I'm worried about is, you know, we want to hear from as many people as possible, but we can't possibly open up that many seats on a committee or else there's going to be paralysis by analysis. There's going to be, you know, 50 people on a committee. So that's something that maybe we need more discussion here tonight before we direct staff to do it is just, you know, if we're going to create a small committee, which I support and I'd love to be a part of, how many positions are we going to hold or is it going to be more small, but people are invited to come and participate in the meeting? That's what I would recommend is that, you know, if, if it's a smaller committee, we are still welcoming public comments at our meetings. We're still keeping the public involved throughout the process. I think that's the best way to go about it, but also not have, you know, 50 people voting on an issue or deciding what to bring forward before the commission. To touch on some of the other consensus items you were looking for, Mayor, the housing facility, I'm, I'm happy to look into it. I'm finding direct staff to look into it. I don't want to commit to something before I know what the cost is. So I'm not, I'm not going to say, you know, full steam ahead, but I, I would love to look into it. I think it's, it's a great idea. As far as the location of the feedings and maybe getting them along US 19, I just don't believe we can control the location of the feedings. You know, the churches and the nonprofits are their own separate entities and I don't know that we can tell them not to serve the needy on site necessarily. You know, good luck to one church to shut its doors and say, sorry, you got to go up to US 19. I, I just don't, I don't think it's feasible. Were those both the consensus issues?
That's it, just the two.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
So just to clarify that, you okay with the create a committee, but not, do you have a centralized area?
Yes, yes. And I'd like to be a part of the committee.
How many members on the committee that you're suggesting, being that you already own a homeless leadership?
That's something for us to discuss. You know, the HLA is up to 27 members. So, so that's, that's sometimes where I mentioned the paralysis by analysis of just, you know, you want to include everybody in the conversation, but at the same time, is it going to be one person from every single church in town? Is it going to be business owners? Is it going to be, whatever we decide, I want the public to be as involved as possible in the process. So I'm, I'm happy to open up any of the committee meetings to the public for discussion. But I just don't think we would ever have enough positions to fill for the committee as, as many people would want to be a part of the conversation. So maybe it's, you know, one, one person from the business community, one person from the churches, one person from, you know, the Shepherd Center, police officer, myself. I'm just spitballing here.
Okay. So you say about nine people probably? Good to start?
Up, up to the board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Vaticura.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I appreciate the discussion this evening. It's, it's very helpful. The problem I'm having is that everything that's being discussed is somewhat short term. And, and I'm going to tell you why I, I think we need to look a little beyond the horizon that we're setting for ourselves. Number one, the Shepherd Center is extremely successful. I spoke to the city manager and we've talked about this before and he reminded me about the original location for the Shepherd Center was going to be out by, behind the Publix. And there were some issues with that. And then we wound up with Mr. Weissman's property that was purchased some number of years ago. So it is there and it's not going to go anywhere. And, and we have absolutely no authority over telling the Shepherd Center how they can operate. So I want to make sure that that's clear. That's what, that's, that's my sense in all of this. Because of that, and if you've been down there, there's an awful lot of activity. I used to work at the AMP and I made a comment today that, that the, the storehouse at the Shepherd Center is more packed with food and other goods than anything I've ever seen at the AMP. And that's a regular grocery store. So she's, they're very, very successful. They're, they're moving a lot of product. There's a lot of people there, a lot of volunteers. And I asked Ms. Delgeis the simple question, what's going to happen when you outgrow this location? And, and my suspicion is part of the pressure that we're seeing right now is because, and if you look at their own numbers, if you look at the Shepherd Center's numbers, we've gone from something like 2,000 up to 3,000 in a matter of about three years in terms of total number of meals served annually. So if that, if that growth continues, we're going to be right back here in about another two years discussing the same issue unless we start looking at a more permanent solution or at least assisting with that. We're, we don't have, we can't dictate the solution to the Shepherd Center. And as I said, the one thing that is good is that the Shepherd Center has, has consolidated itself as the premier organization for the services that they provide. Up until, I would say maybe 10 years ago, at least when I was city manager, it was the ministerial association that did all of that. And now we've got the Shepherd Center with the Lutheran Church having feeding one day a week and then of course to allow the Shepherd Center to do cleanup. And then of course, St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church provides volunteers for Monday. I, I think that there needs to be a long-term solution. Now, Ms. Delgeis has a vision, she's got a plan. I'm not sure where it stands with the Shepherd Center Board, but for us to start telling that we want, we should go out and rent a place or at least look at renting a place on US 19, I would rather hear that, the location come from the people that know more about this than we do, to have them come back and tell us where this should be, whether it's a transitional housing facility, whether it's something that is intermediate to, to get to that point. There needs to be some kind of a plan that's created in order to, a longer range plan that's created to, to solve this for the city, rather than trying to get together every year or two and, and deal with the problems that we're having that are really stemming from their nuisance problems. Nobody wants them. I wouldn't even want them at my home and the business community is suffering from that. So I understand that completely. If, if, for example, if we say we're going to rent a place on US 19 and the Shepherd Center says, fine, you do what you want, we're going to continue doing what we want, what we do here are, we, sure, we'll serve food there just to, to, to kind of satisfy the commission, but then they're going to continue with the activities downtown, we're not going to have, we're not going to see much of an improvement of what, of the issues that we've seen come, the issues that have created this meeting, the reason why we're here discussing this this evening. So I think long-term, there needs to be a movement to relocate these services at the outskirts of the city. I'm not specific. I, and, and I want to say, this isn't my idea, this is Ms. Delgeis's idea. I didn't come up with a north ankload. I didn't come up with 15,000 square feet. This was her idea. So evidently she's put some time into this and maybe she's discussed that with some of her board. So evidently she's put some time into this and maybe she's discussed that with some of her board. So I think we need to allow her the courtesy of, of, of fleshing that idea out a little more and then perhaps coming back to us before we start dictating or telling Ms. Delgeis that we'll rent your building out on US 19. So, and I didn't have that much time to, to spend with her today. It was, it was a couple of hours. I'm sure she has a lot more detail that she can share that we just didn't have the time to get into it. Number, another comment that I have is that because of the Shepherd Center not only serving Tarpon Springs, but it serves Ozona, Palm Harbor. I think you mentioned Safety Harbor today. And, but it is certainly those areas to the north of us, I'm sorry, to the south of us. It, a lot of it's unincorporated Pinellas County. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that if we approach Pinellas County with some kind of plan in the future, that they would participate in some way. But we have to have something to discuss with them. Since we're, we're, and it may not be the homeless, but it's certainly people are driving into town from Palm Harbor to pick up their boxes of food. Those 200, not just the 40, but the 200 or so are picking up their food and, and taking it home with them. So I'm very proud that Tarpon Springs is able to serve this greater area around us and that we should very, we should be supportive of that. And I think Pinellas County, we should not be shy about asking them for some help as well. If, if it involves the county purchasing land for us, for, for us, for the city and the Shepherd Center, that's something that they should do. If there's some partnering that the city can do with, with helping construct a manufacturing building, that's something that can be discussed. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but it, at least it ought to be discussed and listen to the Shepherd Center and, and their group of, of supporters have been in this a lot longer than, than I have and I think most of us here this evening. So I'd like to hear more from them in that regard, but I certainly don't want to tell the Shepherd Center, you know, from the city's perspective, where we're going to rent a building for them. I don't even think that, that, I hadn't even heard that, that, you know, we, we could rent a building to serve food. They didn't mention that. The accountability, I think, is an excellent idea. I, I think I would like to see the, the, if it's going to be the acting police chief, Young, to work with the Shepherd Center and see if there can be some program that's established basically on a privileged basis that if you continue being a nuisance and that sort of thing, you would lose your privileges at the Shepherd Center or perhaps re- required to take a class as the one young lady had stated earlier. I can't, I apologize, I can't remember her name, but, but that's certainly a viable approach to take as far as accountability. I do know that the Shepherd Center, because we discussed it with the condition of the gazebo and the condition of the corner there at Lyme. And it was a lot better than what I saw at the, at Court Street and Pinellas Avenue. So they're doing their own policing and perhaps that could be expanded to include that other corner that seems to be a nuisance as well. So I think an accountability program, if you will, between our police department and the Shepherd Center would go a long way. I don't know that we need to involve anybody else in that, but that, that would be up to, I think, Assistant Chief Young and also the executive director for the Shepherd Center. I think as far as the public housing that was mentioned, Ms. Delgeis and I spoke about that. They have talked to the housing authority. There's a waiting list for people to get in. But yes, that would be the same sort of programs that would house the homeless that are, or that, that visit the Shepherd Center that are on the streets. That would be the same program that would benefit them, except there's nothing available. And it's a federal program and there's federal funds that you work through on that. I don't know anything about grants or anything, but, but I don't think it's anything that's been overlooked by the Shepherd Center. As far as a stakeholder meeting to discuss all of this, I think the way Acting Chief Young described it initially would be the approach I would like to take. Let Acting Chief Young and Ms. Delgeis determine a membership for that and make their recommendation to the commission rather than the commission telling them how to establish this committee, since those two are the most, they're the biggest stakeholders in all of this. Our PDs expend an awful lot of resources on chasing the homeless around the nuisances, reacting to problems, picking them up, taking them down to the county, doing a variety of other jobs along that line. And they do a very good job in that. I'm sure they would like to do a better job, but there's only so many police officers and we, and there are so many people running around with these, creating these nuisances. So the police department's a very big stakeholder. You already heard Ms. Delgeis. They are equivalent to $6 million a year, which is about 10% of the city's budget. That's an extraordinary amount of effort, resources that goes into the services that they pride, that they provide here in Tarpon Springs. And we should all be very proud of that. But because of that and because of the investment that the PD does, has in the, in, in the homeless, I would like to hear from those two as determining the membership and then making a recommendation on that. And then also whatever membership there is on that stakeholder committee. And, and I think it not only should discuss this accountability program, but it should discuss a little longer term, a little longer term approach such as this facility for transitional housing and moving the feeding of the homeless out to the outskirts of town. We're, we're, we're not doing anything by insulting people. I mean, I, I don't know the homeless people. I've not been homeless. I've seen homeless, I've talked to them. I don't know how they feel. I don't know whether they would be more comfortable at the outskirts of town. I don't know whether they would be more comfortable in town. I just don't know. And I'm not going to tell you that I know. But I think that's for something that Ms. Geis, Ms. Geis need, Delgeis needs to come back with and also police, Acting Chief Young needs to come back with and, and, and at least give us a report. And I'd like to see that report in three months. I never like to leave a loose end on things of this nature. I'd like to hear back in three months as far as what progress has been made. Maybe sooner, but at least three months, I think, would give both sides plenty of time. Maybe an interim report as far as if the commission chooses to go that route to let them decide who the members ought to be, make the recommendation to us and then proceed accordingly and then let them get into their work. And, and again, an interim report would be fine for me. But I still think that they're the experts. They're the ones who are the stakeholders, at least the two biggest ones. And let them bring out others that are stakeholders into this process as well. I don't want to be a Johnny come lately and profess that I know much about what goes on at the Shepherd Center. I don't. So Mayor, with that thought, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, listening to everyone, seems like we have a consensus to create a committee with the stakeholders. And if we direct our city manager to work with the stakeholders to create that and Commissioner Donovan volunteered to represent the board of commissioners and I appreciate that very much. I think that's the consensus that we have. Everybody agrees with that? Commissioner Donovan, you had something to say?
Yes, I agree with that, but our city attorney was looking like he had something to say.
Yes. I, I just, before you create a board, I just want to make sure that the commission understands that if, if we are creating a board, it is a sunshine board, a public records board. So everybody who gets appointed by whoever you're about to designate be the appointing official is going to have to understand that they can't talk to each other about the board's work outside of the sunshine. We will have to coordinate sunshine meetings and have the clerk attend. It, it, you do have an option to just have the city manager, have this be a, a staff analysis and then the city manager has the ability to reach out into the community and talk to all of the stakeholders that he and the police department need to, to get factual information or expertise or whatnot without calling it a committee and having it vote on things, but instead just providing a feedback. And then your, your manager would be the one to come back with whatever recommendations that he gets. That's an option. You can still create a board.
In your opinion, it, it will be okay if we have Commissioner Donovan to be on board on the, on this committee, on this group, if you will?
Well, I think Commissioner Donovan and the, the nonprofit that he sits on or, or the advisory homeless that he sits on can certainly provide the city manager with its, its input and viewpoints as well. But there really would be no thing for Commissioner Donovan to sit on. It would be the city manager saying, I have been tasked by the commission with examining these issues with gathering input from the business community, from the, the homeless community, from all of the stakeholders. And then I, the city manager and my staff will produce a list of recommendations for the commission to adopt. Some of them may be policy, some of them may be funding. That's one way to go. If you go that way, you don't have worries about sunshine and whatnot. And the other way you can go is to actually create a committee. But if we, the government, create a committee, it's got to be public records and sunshine.
Well, then in my opinion, I think it would be better if we take your suggestion on the, to have a group of people working with Mr. Licurs. This way they can call each other and, and pass on information to each other, communicate with each other without a word about the sunshine law.
Absolutely. But the, but the assignment would be, the assignment would be the city manager's.
I mean, this is what I need to.
Mayor, I think that was what I was talking about. I don't want to overly complicate that. The city manager's agreeing with that. I think there's a lot more that we need to learn before we start establishing committees and things like that. I think just getting the two main stakeholders together, get their thoughts together, have an interim report in three months, provide a report of where they think we ought to go. I, I, I think the city manager with the input from Acting Chief Young is going to come back and, and along with the cooperation of the Shepherd Center, will have this accountability program, which I think is the short-term issue. If, if we can establish some procedure, that would be the way it would come. And I think the city manager will come back with some report by probably Acting Chief Young to let us know what the program is. I, I, at least that's how I envision this process.
I need to ask the board again, are you agree with the recommendation that we got from the city, city attorney?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I can ask the city attorney a question?
Sure you can.
Does it prevent the city manager from calling a meeting of local individuals, business owners, Commissioner Donovan, the police?
It absolutely does not. And, and city managers and county administrators do that all day, every day because they need to understand what's going on in the community before they go back and make recommendations to the governing board.
Okay, I think that's clear, so I would support that.
Commissioner Donovan, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm in support of what the city attorney just said. And I think the more informal we can keep it, the more flexibility it gives us. And I, I still don't think it prevents us from reaching out to the community or holding meet and greets, getting in contact with them every way we can.
Yeah.
For that matter, for any commissioner, for any commissioner.
You okay with that?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Commissioner Tiqueros, you had something else you would like to say?
No, I was saying, I, I mean, if you keep it informal, anybody, I, I get invited to the SpongeDox meetings all the time. So I, I'm kept abreast. They can invite you, Mayor. They can invite Vice Mayor Carr. So I like the idea of keeping it informal. That was the whole idea. And I, I think that's what Commissioner Donovan is saying. Thank you.
Looks like we have a consensus to do just that. Mr. Licurs?
Yes, I fully understand. Good.
Seems clear?
I'm good.
Okay. If we have no more comments, the, the meeting is adjourned. 10:10 PM. Thank you, everybody.